Let's call this meeting in order. Welcome to the April 15, 2021 Planning Board meeting. Kim Conner will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kim. As ever, you learned it well. Cheryl, why don't you lead us in the roll call, please?
Okay, Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon. Peter.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
And Neil Zuckerman.
I'm here, but slowing the mute button. All right, thank you very much for that, Cheryl. Good evening, welcome to the April 15, 2021 meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. Why don't we start with approval of the minutes, please? You should have each received January's special meeting for the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival and the March Minutes. I have a motion to approve the January special meeting minutes, please. Peter, thank you. The awkward silence was killing you, I'm sure. Any second, please. Oh, thank you, Heidi. All right, guys, you guys are killed. We got, we got.
Yeah, yeah, pick it up.
Easy stuff, guys. Any discussion, any edits, deletions? None? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions, thank you. The March Minutes, also riveting, Cheryl, thank you for those. Have a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion, any edits, deletions? No, all right, motion to approve, please. Let me, all in favor, say aye, sorry. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
And abstentions, thank you, those passed. All right, correspondence, there are three things I'd like to just mention briefly in correspondence. The first is, is a bit of an indelicate topic, but as Mr. Watson is here, you're familiar with the negative balance on Horton Road LLC. Glenn, you're on mute.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I mean, you don't have to tell me the resolution, but your client has this in hand at this point?
I am told he does. I will, I will double check.
All right, thank you. I think enough said on that topic. Second, we have. I just want to mention something because we've seen a lot of emails of the planning board. So this, I'm just going to show this for those on Zoom. This is a package of the letters from the related to the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival between February 15th and April 1st. For those of you who are only able to hear me, please be clear. Every board member has these letters. Every board member has read these letters. Your opinions matter. As I've said multiple times before, we will have a public hearing in the future. I cannot give you a date yet. We have to finish our deliberations on the EF Part Two, but we are reading your letters. We appreciate your letters. They are being received and they are being read. So just, I don't think I could say that any more times because I've now repeated myself three times, but hopefully everyone heard. I'm sure my fellow board members have had enough of hearing that. So that's the second correspondence, and I think that is all that we need to cover. Any other piece of correspondence, Cheryl, I should mention?
Um, no.
Okay. All right, let's, let's cover.
I want to talk about correspondence, though.
Please.
So. One of the things that's been asked, I just, for clarity, I've been helping with the town website because I designed it in the first place a decade plus ago. And there have been questions about putting these letters up on the website. And so I, Cheryl and I were, reached out to Steve to find out, you know, what the rules are. And basically, we, he said that we have a decision to make over whether these letters go on the website or when. Like, they might ordinarily have been held for the public hearing, and maybe Steve could just talk about it a little bit.
Sure, there's no requirement to post letters received from the public on your website. They're not part of the applicant's submissions. They're not part of the board's proceedings. Technically, they're out of order until you have your public hearing. Notwithstanding that, if it's the board's pleasure to do so, you can, let me take a step back. I distinguish letters that are on a particular application that's pending from letters that are sent in generally. And I realize that the Horton Road one was on a particular application, but it really didn't deal with the merits of it. It was just one of these, you know, or if you get a letter asking you to release a bond or something like that. Those can be dealt with under correspondence at the beginning, and those should be posted on the town's website because that is board business. But if people are submitting letters or sending emails or what have you, on an application where you haven't gotten to the point where you're accepting public comment yet, the board has a choice. They can either post them as they come in over time, or you can hold them and post them all when the time for the public hearing comes, preferably a month before the public hearings, people have time to read them. There's advantages and disadvantages to both. For example, posting them as you go along, you may have a bunch of letters that deal with issues which simply have been resolved or are no longer issues. They could be completely irrelevant. People, you know, may prefer to read all the letters from the public in one fell swoop to say, all right, here's a letter on this topic, letter on this topic, letter on this topic. Or maybe you think people would rather read them as you go along and say, gee, I hadn't thought of that issue before. I think I want to write something on it. So it's up to the board. You don't have to post them at all until the public hearing. But if you want to, you can post them as they come in, or you can hold them until, until then. So it's the board's pleasure.
Then to me.
Say that again, Neil.
What is the sentiment of this group?
Well, if I could, if I could vote, since it's just a lot, it seems to me it makes more sense to put them all up together in advance of the public hearing rather than, you know, having. Rather than having to make sure that each letter goes up onto the website because that's just a lot of, a lot of links, you know? It would just be easier to have one link, one batch. That would be my preference.
Others? Anyone?
Does it make sense to put them on the website as they're coming in? Is that what you're referring to?
No, I.
I'd be concerned if we missed something, and then someone from the public said their letter was never posted on the website.
Yeah, I have a, I have a slightly different view, Kim. I would rather find a way to batch them on a monthly basis and then post as opposed to waiting four, five, six months and then dumping a deluge. I would agree with you that posting them as they come in seems unfair, an unfair administrative burden, but I would think on a monthly basis, at least, that's not, that's not a crazy periodicity.
Okay, so what would be the cutoff point for that then? Because it would seem to me.
The exact same cutoff that Cheryl uses for any applicants. We just use the exact same cutoff. Yes, Cheryl?
I agree, and I can just scan them each month at that cutoff so that you've got what's coming by that date.
So that's two weeks before our meeting.
Correct.
Right? And so I guess the question would be if we're going to, I just want to make sure we, let's, you know, the cutoff, it's a Friday. So to make sure that, you know, something comes in on Friday at 5:00, you know, that you're not, if it's not on the website on Friday night, that it's not a problem. So, you know, that there would be an expectation if they come in on the Friday that they wouldn't be up until at least the Monday evening, just to make sure that people aren't calling and harassing us about not getting it up. Because it's an extra, it's a different step, you know, because she's got to get it to me and then, or to Tara.
Why don't you just do them at the end of each month? This way, you can post them every single month. This is the month of February, March, April, May, and they're all there. Each month. Do you want, I'm just making a suggestion.
I mean, you know, it seems to me that since Cheryl has this deadline of two weeks before, it would be best if it were like her, if people had to meet her deadline rather than adding an extra deadline for just our board to her. You know, we're not the only board she works for. So I would say it would need to be the same deadline to get them in as the applicant, but that people wouldn't expect to see them until the Monday after the Friday they get them in. Just so that there's time, you know, if something happens and we don't get them up, we don't, you aren't telling us you didn't have them up, you know, on time on the Friday that I sent it in, because we will hear about that.
So I guess we could say they'll be posted the week before the meeting because that would make sense, right?
They, well, they'd be, you know, if you, if you've got everything you have by the Friday, you know, you would scan and send to me by Monday, and then I would, or Tara, because Tara may be doing that as well, and then we would have them up Monday night.
Right.
So we need a vote.
Do we need, we need a vote? I don't know if we need a vote on that. Sounds like we have clarity on, let's do it monthly.
Steve says we need a vote.
We have votes, Steve?
If you're going to establish a board policy as opposed to just something that your secretary is doing on her own, then or clerk is doing, pardon me, then you really should vote and say, this is what we want you to do.
I'm happy to have a, happy to have a vote. I'm confident that a lot of things we do or don't have, don't have board votes on them, but that's, that's including the private deadline itself, but that's fine. Can I have a motion then to post on a monthly basis the letters that come in using the same deadline we have for applications? May I have a motion of that effect? Thank you, Heidi. Kim, second, all in, any discussion or more discussion? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Now, we haven't even started our agenda yet, so let's begin, let's begin the agenda. Okay. First piece of Business Magazineo. As you recall, we directed Ron at last month to give us our, the documentation necessary for the amended resolution, site plan approval resolution. You have that in your packets. I'm going to, Ron, is anything to say on this matter besides the fact that we have the resolution? You're on mute, Ron.
As the board understands, the applicant was unable to conclude the purchase of the adjacent property. So then now we're trying to amend the prior site plan and special use permit to reflect the site plan covering only the current property of the applicant, and that's the resolution before you.
Okay, thank you. Steve, anything to add?
No, it's very straightforward like Ron said.
Okay, Kim, you have a comment?
Yeah, on this resolution, it says that it includes the scholar in residence dwelling, which I, as I understand it, has been removed from the plan because that was going to go on the extra piece. So I don't know if this document has to be revised to remove that. It's.
Very good catch.
It's under the whereas on November 19th, 2020, on the first page.
Yeah, that, that whereas is the original, relates to the original approval granted, including the line line adjust, the bottom of page one. There's another whereas that indicates that the scholar in residence has been eliminated.
The additional property, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure. Yep, good.
Okay, let's have a motion, please, then we can have any further discussion. Have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Kim, looks like a second. Okay, discussion, any other comments? No, any other comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we have two public hearings this evening, one for the Desmond Fish Library, the second for Mr. Khan on 403. I will be recusing myself as I'm a member of the Board of the Desmond Fish Library. I turn it over to our first Vice Chair, Kim Connor. Kim, you have the virtual gavel.
Excellent, okay. So we decided at last month's meeting that we were going to reopen the public hearing because of the notice that was required. Signage on the property was not directed. So I just want to know, for honor, Steve, have any comments before we open the public hearing?
No, I have none.
Public hearing.
Sorry, Steve?
Treat it like a regular public hearing.
Okay, so is there anyone here from the public? Do we want Cheryl to read the notice?
I guess that makes sense, and then ask the applicant if they want to say anything and then throw it over.
All right.
Okay. The Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 15th, 2021, starting at 7:30 PM via Zoom to hear the following appeal. If you would like to attend, please email crocket@philipstown.com to request login information before 7:00 PM on April 15, 2021. Alice Curtis Desmond and Hamilton Fish Library, 472 Route 403 Garrison, New York, Tax Map Number 71.6-1-12 and 71.6-1-13. Applicant seeks to install a ground mounted solar ribbon array integrated with the landscape's natural topography. We would also like to create a discovery path to provide community members welcoming and ADA accessible outdoor walkways and opportunities to learn about habitats that occur naturally on the library's property as well as solar energy and design. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, plat map, and other related materials may be seen in the office of the Planning Board at the Phillips Town Building Department dated at Phillips Town, New York, March 18th, 2021.
Okay, so Jen, are you representing the applicant or is Laura going to speak?
I can do a quick intro and Laura can give just a brief summary of our original presentation, if that's okay, because it's been a while, I think, since our February presentation about the project. First, I just wanted to say that the library has been considering solar for a long time prior to my tenure here as Director, and we've looked at a lot of different options. We looked at doing solar on the roof, but it didn't work with the slate roof. We looked at doing something, a larger array out in the field to maximize energy generation, but we didn't want to take up the property with solar panels. And so we sort of tabled it for a while, but in 2016, we went out and started a long range planning process with community conversations with all kinds of folks in the community. And we had these recurring themes that emerged from those conversations, talking about our goals and concerns for the community. Three of them have informed our long range plan, a love of the environment and the natural beauty of the outdoors in our region, concerns about climate change, and seeking connection across divides in the community. And so we incorporated all of those into our long range plan, which was adopted in 2018 with a focus on sustainability and creating community engagement and gathering spaces on the library property. And that's really what has spurred this solar project in, with the goal of integrating both of those goals on the site. In 2019, we received a library construction aid grant for both solar and master site planning, and we were very lucky to hire Laura Peary and her team because of their focus on community involvement in the design process and also a very creative approach to solar design. The resulting design beautifully integrates the array with the landscape. It highlights the natural habitats that occur along the walking paths throughout the site. I'm most proud of the community conversations and the public process that has informed this project, and I hope that it will serve as an educational and inspirational tool for our community for many years to come. And I'm going to turn it over to Laura to talk a little bit more about the project itself.
Great, thank you, Jen. May I share my screen, please?
Yes, just one second.
Great, thank you so much. I'm pleased to be here today to share a little bit about the design process and the community engagement whereby we arrived at this sculpturally based placemaking sculpture, landscape as part of Desmond Fish Library project, as Jen just overviewed. We're really happy to be able to work with a lot of the goals of the library that Jen just overviewed, and we paid very close attention to their goals around sustainability as well as community experience and community engagement. Just as an overview for those of you who might like to know, excuse me. We began this process, process in June of 2019 with an investigation phase. That phase included a community meeting, which happened in July, where we had community, community members to the library to generate ideas and the community's values for the project. Then the project went forward into a visioning or design phase where we developed concepts. Once we had those concepts in hand, which were based on the ideas and the needs of the library and the community input, we presented those concepts to the community for their input and discussion, as well those concepts were on display at the library for at least a month or two. Then at the conclusion of that, we refined one of the designs or a mashup of the designs into the final design solution that you see here tonight. So the design process spanned the last half of 2019, and the library spent the last year getting logistics and things in place to move forward. After the, the first library ideas meeting was advertised through the library's channels and on their Facebook page, as you can see here, and the ideas that came out of that were really wide ranging. It had to do with site access, character, uses on site, other ways the community felt that they could use the site or engage more broadly with the activities of, of knowledge and connection that the library embodies in its mission. After the first meeting where we took all of these ideas from that July meeting, we presented to the library and the community three options which embodied those ideas in three different potential solutions, and you see those here. Once these solutions were gathered, we had our second community meeting where we presented these options, and then those who were in attendance actually through Post-it notes ranked their preferences of individual aspects of the scheme and then the overall scheme so that we could look at the values and the aspects of each project that those in the community liked the best. After the options were presented in a community meeting, the boards were on display in the program room of the library for at least a month or two. Jen, was it about two months at least, something like that?
It was September through January, so.
Okay, several months, great, thank you. The final outcome of that, where folks had additional time while the boards were on display in the program and they could add additional comments, the final outcome of that was a design scheme called the Discovery Path. And the idea of the Discovery Path is everything belongs in its natural place on the 13 acre side of the Desmond Fish Library. It provides an opportunity for a walking path, if you can see my cursor, that goes around the site that's ADA accessible. So all those of multi abilities are able to diverse this path. It includes a reading garden, which was completed last summer, and what we're here to look at for this application is just the solar array ribbon here, and we call it a ribbon because it's a one panel high, very lightly floating sculptural array that's oriented in the optimized solar orientation, but also sits very lightly and compatibly within the landscape. The other part of the application that we're submitting at this point, because this is a master plan, the entire site is not being developed, you know, implemented at this point, is this, this path, which is essentially a gravel path where it does cross over some wetland area. There is a footbridge that goes over it. Other than that, the rest of this will be at some, implemented in some future date under a separate application. Here's our rendering of the array so that you can see that its profile is meant to feel very light and airy. It's complemented by landscape materials and its orientation and relationship to the path is changing. We developed as part of a future master plan planting strategies to complement the different areas of the site, and you can see that here, and again, the final image.
Okay. So at this point, if there are members of the public who would like to speak, if you could raise your hand and, you know, there's a little on your Zoom screen there at the bottom, there's a little raise your hand marker, and Cheryl can let you into the meeting.
We have a few people, so I'm just going to go in order.
Okay.
This is James Copeland. Just moving him over.
Danny, you're on mute.
Thank you. Just looking at the rendering, the appeal to this as a ribbon. I mean, it's very interesting, but I am concerned about the maintenance of this over, over time. Given the, the kind of windstorms we've had in these past couple of years, this thing could look less like a ribbon and more like the shoes in one of my daughter's closets. So I'm concerned that there'd be enough, that it'd be technologically capable of holding its shape. I see that there are about three or four per post. There's not much detail here to go by, but this, unless, unless this can be maintained, this could look really awful in a short number of years. Because the ribbon quality does require that each panel maintain its critical connection to each other one, and it, and its relationship as being fluid. If it's, if it's not maintained, it will be lost. This is the, the landscape around here just does not stay fixed. It, it through three straw, three saw cycle, it does change. Things move, and I just, that was my comment last time, it remains the same. I, I am concerned about maintaining something like this, that it's kind of, once it's, once it's in the ground, out of sight, out of mind, because, because the library has put this closer to the McNairies, the Copelands, and the Regalays than anywhere else. And so we're going to be looking at it, and I want to make sure that this does not end up looking like a confused jumble within a few short years.
Thank you. Shall I reply or just take note?
So typically, I don't, I, it's been a while since I've run a public hearing, but typically we don't have responses from the applicant, I think. Who's next?
Next is Joseph Regalay. I'm just moving him over.
Okay, Joe, you're on mute.
On me, hello?
Hi, we can hear you now.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for reopening the hearing. Couple of things, one, I'm a supporter of the library, and I was on the library board for years. I've contributed to the library for years, and I want to be clear that I'm not opposed to solar power. However, I would really like to understand how this process went forward. Well, I understand based on earlier comments that there were a number of public hearings. The process itself, I think, is a bit flawed. The library is located in the SPOD or the Scenic Protection Ovalley District. I've reviewed the minutes, I've reviewed the documents, I haven't seen any reference to the scenic overlay protection district or any of the requirements that the scenic overlay protection district puts on any kind of installation or development. The purpose of the scenic overlay protection district is the protection of the Hudson River corridor and, and actions necessary to preserve the attractive rural and historic quality of the town. The purpose of this section is to regulate, regulate land use and to maintain the scenic beauty and rural character. This section's intended to apply to those sections of the road and river corridors that are visible to the public and that substantially retain their scenic character. Due to its location in the scenic oval eight district, the applicant's also required to review and respond to the Route 90 scenic corridor management plan of 2006. corridor management plan of 2006. Again, I've seen no reference to that in any of the presentations and I don't understand why this hasn't been made. In addition to those requirements, I would like to see personally as someone who's across the street from this installation, a sightline study which would show what's actually going to happen. The renderings, while very attractive, don't give any real information from the point of view of relative exposure. And by that, I mean Route 9D and the library fields are at different elevations. So while these panels may be low profile, how do they actually on a strict elevation relate to 9D? When you're driving up not up north or south on 9D, it is again, according to the the scenic byway corridor management, this extraordinarily beautiful road. And as you're heading south especially and you look to your left, which is east, what are you going to see? These panels are going to be in the field. Now, the the overlay protection district regulations require a screening plan for any new structure. I haven't seen any indication of a screening plan anywhere in the in the documents submitted. And in fact, the on page 12 of the applications submitted by the library, when it gets to the screening plan, that box was not checked. And it said screening plan is not required, yet the corridor management program requires a screening plan. And and you know, it disappears to have been overlooked. In addition to the fact that the scenic byway from my review of the documents has been overlooked and the screening plan has been overlooked, there is a question about on the plan and I would like it confirmed by the library that this area of overflow parking is currently not up for approval. Because there's an there's an issue about this additional parking that has been put on the plan that I think is very problematic. This parking lot is located at what I would call the end of the runway. And the runway I would describe as as you pass the garrison school and come down the hill, you come out of a 25 mile per hour zone and the minute you hit the bottom of that hill, people start to accelerate and on average are going 50, 55 miles an hour by the time they get to the entrance, which is Lisburn Lane of the area that's projected for future parking. Now, the the issue with that is that that incredibly dangerous stretch of road, I've lost a dog there. I've had to call the highway department multiple times to remove dead deer from this stretch of the road. And this particular plan is now calling for using the Lisburn Lane there in a left turn to provide additional parking, which in and of itself is a question as to what the demand would be. But I want to make sure that this is something that's going to be very carefully looked at. Another issue and was raised by Mr. Copeland, who I in my notes here I have written down is the probably the most polite individual in Phillips Town wants to know about maintenance. What's required to maintain these panels? What's the lifespan of these panels? You know, solar energy is moving so fast that are we going to find in 10 years' time that these panels are obsolete? And if they're obsolete in 10 years' time and they're out there in the field, what's going to happen to them? And and it's my understanding that generally for like a cell tower or something like that, a decommissioning bond is required. So that if you're going to put something on the landscape and it's going to be an intrusive piece of work, that there needs to be provisions made to remove this. And and you know, it's interesting what was happening right now at Indian Point. Indian Point has to be closed because that incredibly what's the word I'm looking for? That incredibly advanced technology that was the cure to all energy needs is now a problem and it's a problem that has to be decommissioned. So what's the board doing about a decommissioning bond? And what is the actual lifespan of this? And and I realize that the lifespan is is one question, but it's really going to be hard to see again due to how quickly the technology is moving this field. Lastly, I'd like to raise the issue of precedent. What kind of precedent is being set by putting this out in the field and putting it on display? In the minutes of February 18th, one of the library board members was quoted as saying that that this is a public demonstration. It's a public demonstration of the library's commitment to green energy. And so my question is, if it's a public demonstration, how is it different from a billboard? And what are the requirements for billboards? And I'll answer that question, which is to say they can't be within 600 feet of a state highway. And the there are two solar arrays within a mile of the Hamilton Fish Library on Route 9D. Now, I don't know if everybody or anybody is aware of those arrays, but what's interesting about these arrays is that they are invisible. Now, that doesn't make them any less effective, the fact that they're invisible. And I think that from my perspective and driving by this this field several times a day, seven days a week, you know, I don't want to see a bunch of hardware out there and I surely don't want to see a bunch of hardware that's that may or may not be relevant in 10 years' time and that that, you know, regardless of different people's opinion, it really is an opinion whether it looks good or doesn't look good. And that brings us back to the Scenic Protection Overlay District and the screening requirements. Because once we get into the the question of whether or not this is attractive, it becomes relative. Attractive to you may not be attractive to me. And how does that work? And you know, I think that that in the again, in the minutes from the 18th of February, the issue was raised that, oh, well, this looks a little bit like a Cristo installation. And oh, wasn't wasn't the flags, the the gates in Central Park quite beautiful? Well, the gates in Central Park were quite beautiful and the essence of a Cristo installation is that they are one ephemeral and two, the temporary. Cristo installation is made to highlight nature, to highlight the environment and then the, you know, wait for it, it is removed. So the this solar array, which is going to be hardware, it's going to require maintenance, is not ephemeral and in fact, it is permanent. And it is not a piece of artwork. It is a utility. And as a utility, it comes back to the requirements of the scenic byway and it should not be visible. If the library would like to you know, move forward with solar energy, I think that's wonderful. I just don't think we should be forced to look at it and I don't think we should be forced to look at it because it's a public display, letting everybody know that the library is doing the right thing in terms of energy. So in conclusion, you know, I am requesting that the board keep this hearing open and that they require the applicant to return a comprehensive plan that shows how these solar panels will be screened and ultimately upon the the end of the useful life, when and how the panels will be removed and how to be paid for. And I think.
So we have a long meeting here tonight. So is are you, is that you come to the end?
Well, yes, I I'm just checking my notes. The last thing about precedent, quite simply is, you know, we've got a lot of spaces along Route 9D. You've got you've got St. Basil's. You've got the Highlands Golf Club. And and if we set a precedent that these panels are, it's acceptable to just put these panels in these fields because some people think they look good. What's going to happen to those spaces and how are we going to deal with those precedents? How are we going to deal with this precedent when St. Basil's wants to put a solar array on their soccer field? Or the Highlands closes and someone wants to put a whole solar array out there. It's a slippery slope. And you know, again, I think we have to return back to the the byway plan, which is supposed to help regulate this type of activity. I'm not asking you to not put the panels out there. I'm just asking you to have a screening plan that will hide them from Route 9D and make it so the natural environment is preserved and protected.
Okay. Anybody else, Cheryl?
Yes. David Ward.
Okay.
Let's see, just sorry, Linda LaMonaco.
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. LaMonaco. You're on mute. Hi, you're on mute.
Okay.
Hi, now we can hear you.
Okay, I'm Linda LaMonaco. I am on the backside of where the solar panels are going to be. I'm on, Joe was incorrect. It's not Lisburn Lane. It would be Meadow Lane where the overflow parking would be. That's my driveway. I'm probably of everyone here the most familiar with that field because I've been mowing it for about six years. So I I've been over hill and dale and can see different things. I very much like the look of the way the solar panels are, however, a little about me, I worked at Indian Point for many years. I'm a proponent of nuclear energy. We also have groundwater heat pump at our house for the last 35 years and we have 95% of our electricity provided by solar, that's on the barn that no one who comes to my house can see. They it's invisible. So I tend to agree with Joe that we're putting a utility on public display. However, I think it's great that we want to use solar. I think it's fabulous. My biggest concern is screening as well. That part of the road is fairly dangerous. And when you come south past my driveway, if there's a solar panel array visible there, people are going to turn their head to the left. And it's just human nature, not so much going north because you sort of can't see it. But I would love to see a screening plan as well. And in the current design, where the most visibility is, is the wetland pond. So you can't really screen much if you have a pond. And there's not many trees other than willows, which are disgusting, to plant in that wetland. So you're sort of missing it. And of course, coming down my driveway, I will see the backside of those panels forever. And you know, that's the way it is. It's not my property. I have to live with it. I see there are some trees being planned to be planted. However, I don't know how long it's going to take to plant those trees. So it could be five to 10 years before those solar panels have integrated into the environment. Again, I do mow that field and it doesn't take long, not even a season, for the wild roads bushes to spring up. So you know, natural grasses are all well and good, but maintenance of it is a huge piece of it. And I do a lot of landscaping and it it's not as easy as the plan looks. And it's going to be expensive to keep it up. Um, so let me see what else I got. I I I would like to see a rendering that has perspective from what you can actually see by elevation, like they have in architectural drawings as you come up and down Route 9D. The the area that the solar panels are going in is very wavy in in height. It goes up and down very natural pastoral. But you still can see a lot of it from the road. Okay, my my, excuse me, my other concern would be with the overflow parking because you're using my driveway. And I pay for the maintenance of that driveway. So in the future, I would expect the library would need to chip in if that road gets used on any regular basis because it's full of potholes just from our few people going on it. Um, this landscaping, yeah, it gets really weedy there. That's that's all. But I think it looks pretty. I'd just like to see a little bit more elevation look of it. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl, is anybody else?
Yes. I have Carolyn Copeland. I'm just moving her over.
Okay, and I forgot to say this at the beginning, but everybody's done this, but anybody who speaks should state their name and where they live. Please.
Hello, this is Carolyn Rossi Copeland. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I actually, my husband, I didn't realize he was going to be on. We concur on what he was presenting as well as Linda and as well as Joe. And I would like to say that it is a very dangerous spot in the road. It's we keep our hedges low so that we can actually get out of our driveway. And I do think that having the solar panels will be a deterrent for people driving south. And quite honestly, I hope that the board will consider having the the hedge or some sort of covering because quite honestly, when we considered solar panels for our house, I didn't want it to be a burden to anybody else to have to look at. So I would appreciate the board taking this into consideration that our community is a beautiful place with open fields. And we would like to see the fields maintain their open look. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl, is anybody else?
We have a couple more. Leslie Perez.
Okay. Ms. President, oh, go ahead, Ms. Perez.
I had not had my hand raised, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and I have Louis Burke.
Mr. Burke, you're on mute. Hello, Mr. Burke, you're, go ahead, give your name and your where you live. Hello? We can't hear you very well. You're very faint. Sorry, we can't make it out. Maybe you could try again.
I'll call in, call on someone else and I will try to call in.
Okay, Mr. Burke is going to try and call in. Cheryl, is there anybody else?
Right now, there are no more hands up.
Okay. So let's just give Mr. Burke a couple of seconds to try and call in again.
This is Bob Flur. I just have one question regarding that path. It's going to be made of stone. Is that going to be easy for wheelchairs to go through that? It'd be because that's what it's supposed to be for, right? ADA compliant?
Yeah.
I don't want, you know, so I just wanted to see if, you know, because stones are pretty tough to get wheelchairs on, that's all.
Exactly. No, it's it's a it's a compliant path.
Thank you.
Okay. So no sign of Mr. Burke. I suppose at this point, let's just give him a couple more seconds. Sorry to drag this out, everybody. It's just, you know, the technology doesn't always work for everybody. There's no sign of him showing up in the in the participant group, right, Cheryl?
I don't see any new numbers or any hands up yet.
Yeah, yeah. I think he's on a phone, so he might not be able to.
Okay, okay, I have a hand up from David Ward.
Okay. Mr. Ward, you're on mute. Mr. Ward, if you could state your name and where you live and go ahead.
It's David Ward. We live almost across from the library, 28 acres of fields, which we acquired 41 years ago. And we have built one house and the rest of the fields are under a conservation easement. And we would never consider putting solar panels in those fields because the character of the center of garrison really is, when we arrived, was really set by the beautiful fields. really is, when we arrived, was really set by the beautiful fields. And solar energy is very important. There are millions of acres in the United States which can be devoted to that. And I think Mrs. Desmond, who bought the land and paid for the library, would have been very confused to know that the building that she built was being linked with a a utility generating station in effect, which would be selling power to the to Central Hudson. And I think Mr. Wrigley made, made all the valid points here. And I, I only heard about this a few days ago when I got a registered letter. There's been a lot of reference to me, planning and all discussion is the first I ever heard. And I would have loved to participate in this in the early stages. And I really haven't had a chance to collect my thoughts. I hope there will be further discussions before anything is decided because I think it's, it's, it's just, although it's, the intentions are wonderful, but it's just not appropriate for this location and for the library. It has nothing to do with the purpose of the library, which is what Mrs. Desmond had in mind. So I hope that we'll all have a chance to talk further about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Cheryl, anybody else?
Let me just look. No hands.
No hands. Okay, so it looks like Mr. Burke is not going to make it back. So at this point, I, I'd like some guidance from Steve as to, you know, what our next step is.
Well, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear from the public and to get their comments. You've held two public hearings on this already. If you feel that you've gotten all the public comments that, you know, are likely to come in on the project, then I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing. There was some discussion, however, about a screening plan. I mean, I know Ron noted early on, this is the scenic protection overlay district. The board's been aware of that. So I don't know that there's going to be a need for further studies and like, but if there are, then, you know, maybe you do want to keep it open. What, either way, whether you close it or leave it open, the appropriate thing to do is to have your consultants and the applicant comment on public comments that were made at the meeting today. And at next month's meeting, decide whether you're going to, you know, take action one way or the other on this. Whether you keep the public hearing open till next month's meeting or you close it now, it doesn't really affect that. So the, the question I have before you is keep it open or close it. And I would suggest that the second part of it is really pretty straightforward. You need, there's been enough comments that I think you need to get input from the applicant and from your consultants before you decide to take any action.
Okay. So in that case, I'd like to know if there's anyone in the board who'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing? No? Okay, so in that case, if no one wants to close the public hearing, I guess we'll leave it open. And the next step would be for, as Steve said, for the applicant to respond to the comments. Does the board have any discussion about this before we?
Kim, can I just interrupt you? Mr. Wrigley had his hand up again.
Mr. Wrigley had his hand up again?
Mm-hmm.
I think we've heard from him plenty tonight at the moment, so I'd kind of like to get through the board business. Does anyone on the board have any comments? Heidi, I see you have your hand up.
I just want to say that I, something appeared in my chat at, at the bottom of my screen that Mr. Burke was trying to, was back on. I don't know if that's correct or not, but I saw a note.
Charlie, you want to check that? Did you see him somewhere?
Yes, he is there. Let me move him over.
Okay, Mr. Burke, you're on mute. You could unmute yourself. Okay, we can go ahead. Hello? Yeah. I'm sorry, we just cannot hear you. So I think what I'm going to recommend is that whatever your comments are, if you could put them in writing and send them to the board, to our board secretary, Cheryl Rocket. And we'll have a, I guess, a, if you could get them in writing within the next week so that we can get them to the applicant. That's probably the best we're going to be able to do because we just can't hear you.
That would be preferable, but you're keeping the public hearing open, so he'll have a chance to comment some more at next month's meeting as well.
If, if we can get him.
Yes, obviously, if he has technical, technical problems, he can. So you should send them in writing.
Should send them in just in case there's any problems next time. Yeah, okay. All right. So is there any discussion from the board at this point?
Kim, Kim, just, just a couple of comments. I, you know, I'm, I'm listening to this and that. You know, this is so great. This is why we have public hearings because people bring up some good ideas. I tend to agree with Mr. Copeland. I'm not, I'm a little suspect of the mounting profile of the, of the, the screw mount that Mr. Copeland pointed out looks, I, I think it's questionable. And as far as Mr. Wrigley, I think he's got a point as far as there being procedural consistency with these applications with new technology. We do have, we, we generally do require some sort of decommissioning bond for things that appear to be evolving technologies, which, which I think, you know, I think it serves us well to look for procedural consistencies. And Ms., Ms. LaMonaco, who talked about not wanting to look at the backside of the panels, if we can go back to something as basic as when you build a fence to partition your lot from another, you're supposed to put the more attractive side facing your neighbors. And so that, that sounds like, again, a, a place where we can look for consistency, not that we want to, I know that, that you can't necessarily face the panels towards them or away from them, but some, I think that gives us some reason to look at other ways of screening. And I think that those, I think these are all consistent ideas. And I, I also all in for solar power, but I think we need some procedural consistencies. And I think that the public's pointed them out and I agree that we should keep the public hearing open. So thanks.
Anybody else? Peter?
Hi, I just, Mr. Wrigley mentioned a document that had to do with Route 9D and the look of the, the road. It's a document that's totally new to me and I'd love to know the name of it and how it might be acquired.
It's on the website?
Is it on the website? Oh, okay. All right. So I'll just.
I'll send you a link after the meeting, but it's, it's on the website. I can't remember which page it is. There's something like, you know, the town code documents or something like that.
Okay, great. I'll look forward to that. Thanks.
Anybody else? No. Okay, so I have one comment related to this, the driveway, the overflow parking. We're not approving overflow parking at this point. That's, that's just on the, that's just on the map, but that isn't anything that's part of this application. It's just to show us that that exists, correct? Okay. And the other question I have is, I, I don't have the documents from January here, but is the scenic protection overlay indicated on the drawing? It is. And are the solar panels outside of that scenic protection overlay?
They're inside the scenic protection overlay and outside of it, both.
Okay. And, you know, just to be clear, that's within our purview to decide to permit or not permit, just as sometimes there are houses that are in the scenic protection overlay. That's what's coming up in the next hearing. So I just wanted to clarify what that, that means. Am I correct about that, Ron?
Yeah, the scenic protection overlay criteria permits you to address potential issues with visibility and may drive the need for screening.
Okay. All right. So at this point, what we're going to do is we'll expect the applicant to come back to us with some answers to the questions that were raised at the public hearing for next month's meeting and we'll, this public hearing is still open and we'll talk about it then. So thank you. Thank you to everybody who called in. Sorry about the technology. It's just difficult to get everybody in the right place. At this point, I will hand us back over to Neil Zuckerman.
Thank you, Kim. All right. So just as a, a, a warning for our friends from the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, we have obviously a very, we have a, this is taking longer than we planned. We generally go for two and a half hours till about 10 o'clock. We will get, we're going to go as fast as we can. I, I'd like to put a note in the heads of my fellow, my colleagues that we may actually ask for a special meeting for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival to start getting a little further ahead of where we are at this point. Just to put in your heads because it's already 8:33. Okay, so we have our second public here this evening. Cheryl, did you read for the CON application, please, the public hearing measures, please?
Sure. The Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 15th, 2021, starting at 7:30 PM via Zoom to hear the following appeal. If you would like to attend, please email crocket@philipstown.com to request login information before 7:00 PM on April 15th, 2021. Mark Con, 242 Route 403, Garrison, New York, tax map number 71 point dash 2 dash 1 0. Applicant is seeking a new single-family residence of approximately 2,300 square feet on approved building lot with associated well, septic system and driveway. All site features implement strategies to work with existing landscape features and restore natural habitats. House floor elevations are established to disturb as little natural grade as possible. Landscape design utilizes native plantings and works with existing drainage as much as possible. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, flat map and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board at the Phillips Town Building Department dated at Phillips Town, New York, March 18th, 2021.
Okay, let's, let's let in the applicants, please. Okay, then David and your team, what I'd like to ask you to not necessarily do is, I, I don't think we have to repeat everything we've already done in every meeting. We, we, I, we don't need a whole presentation, the whole application. If you, if you would like to give the highlights from Hamlet, please, as opposed to redoing it, because we're going to be here all night. I think we don't need to restate everything we've done all the other meetings. So if you could just give the very most brief thing as a prelude to the public speaking, because if the public's here to speak, they've probably already done the digging on what this is. So let's just get to the meat of it, please.
Okay, okay. Great. So we, we will, yes, we'll give you the express presentation. Um, can I share my screen just to?
Yes, please.
There we go. Okay. Okay, thanks everyone for your interest in attendance. So as was mentioned, this is a single-family residence, approximately 2,000 square feet plus courtyards on a wooded lot around, along Route 403, south of Garrison. The, again, it's a wooded lot. This is a rendering from Route 403, giving you a sense of how it fits into the landscape. The house itself is, the floor levels are at grade, it's single story and it steps to match existing grades so that it's following the, the rural siting principles. And the, the main roof of the, the pavilion has a green roof, planted roof, so that it will blend into the landscape. We'll share a little bit about our planting plans as well. We've done extensive planting buffers throughout the site. Jason Snyder, our civil engineer, can give you a quick overview of the onsite civil services?
Sure. We have an approved septic and well for the, from the health department. We have the, the DOT permit for the, for the driveway, for the curb cut on 403, which has been installed. As far as stormwater goes, that, that will be, we're going to be handling that with some green roofs provided by David with his, with his green roof scheme for, for stormwater. So that's about it.
Thanks, Jason. And, and then I will move forward and introduce Liz, our, our landscape designer, to share a little bit about the planting and buffers.
Hi, thanks, thanks, David. Yeah, so in looking at the landscape design for the property, one of the key functional areas that we're looking at is screening, both to the roadway because of the scenic protection overlay from the road from 403 and also to the neighboring houses. So I'm not sure if you can see my cursor on the screen, but we have the screening along 403. We have as much screening that we can do to, there's a neighbor's residence on the kind of left-hand side of the screen. And then there's also the Roush residence that's on the kind of top side of the drawing. And so what we've done is put a mixture of fast-growing deciduous trees, evergreen trees in the areas between those, those, those properties and that they all fit within a native plant profile that is referenced back to the kind of specific plant communities of the Hudson Highlands and of this region in particular. Next, please. These are sections that go through the house from the upper elevation to Route 403, you can see with the cars. So again, we're using planting to, to screen the house itself on all edges. And it's also provides along the slope at 403, the kind of planting scheme, one of the other functional aims is to hold in the slopes and then to prevent, you know, loss of topsoil and erosion. And it also, by having a kind of dense, you can go to the next one, by having a dense planting profile of the ground cover shrub and tree layer, you also are, we're doing the work, letting the plants do the work of kind of keeping out invasive species as much as we can. This is another site section that shows kinds of the, David, do you want to walk through the building heights?
Sure. So the, the very highest point on the house is 25 feet at this point of where it's sloping down. And again, the floor elevations are stepping to follow the, the way, the natural grades here. So this front floor is lower than the others and because of the dip in grade, it's the tallest point. And in the back here, you can see the green roof with a flat, flat roof from the back.
This is the section that goes through the Roush residence. So we're seeing from, you know, we've tried to put these kind of evergreen and deciduous trees to provide the screening on that side. And then there's, yeah, sorry. That's okay, you can go on. And then we also have, on this plan, we have the, we have some dark sky compliant bollards, basically to lead you up the driveway. And it's flew within that courtyard space to kind of have a very subtle lighting scheme through the property, minimizing lighting.
Okay, you guys, oh, all right.
This is kind of background information. We reviewed this at previous meetings, but it basically looks at the biodiversity of the plant communities in Phillips Town. And basically just a note that, you know, when you, our goals are to kind of beef up the. And basically just a note that, you know, when you, our goals are to kind of beef up the diversity of the plant species present, which have been kind of eaten away by deer, etc. And that that in turn supports diversity of animal habitat.
I beg you not to walk us through.
We're not going to walk it through, we're done, that's all, we're done, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you, all right, who do we have from the public, Cheryl? Show your unmute.
Sorry. Okay, I'm just taking a quick look, I don't see any hands up at this moment. Oh, I got one. Showing a hand, but then I'm not seeing it next to anyone's name.
Fred Osborne, I'm guessing was here for the for the, oh, he could be here for this too, Fred, can you hear us?
I can bring him over.
There he is, there he is.
I'm unmuted, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Fred, go ahead, state your name, please, I mean, obviously, your name is Fred Osborne, but keep going, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Fred Osborne, I'm at old at Old West Point Road, three sixty-five. We are close neighbors just beyond the Rouches. We are interested in the intention of this project to utilize the. Contours of the land to minimize the visibility of this rather enormous house project to the neighbors. We would drive down Old West Point Road and look to our left to see this valley, which has a major wetland on it. And to imagine a house fitting in to the contours. So I am ambiguous about approving it or encouraging it or opposing it. But I am appreciative of Mr. Khan's effort to utilize the general. Parameters of the nature that he is intending to. Disrupt.
You should have seen it under Sandy and Irene.
Thank you.
We, would Mrs. Osborne like to also comment?
I have two comments, Hurricane Sandy and Superstorm Sandy and Irene, that whole valley was under a lot of water. And it was right, it was running hard. I'm hoping the green roof has sufficient area, depth and pitch to handle these intense inputs of water. The other thing I would like to see, and you probably have it at the building department, is your plant list. Is that true, you have a plant list I can look at?
I'm pretty confident Ms. Campbell here, who was dying to walk through her fourteen plants would, has absolutely abundant amount of information on her plants.
I'd love to hang out with her.
She, if you, if you were on video and you could see Liz, she's smiling right now. You guys are two peas in a pod, I love it, all right.
Yeah, we're plant geeks, we'd love it, thank you.
Are you good, anything else?
No, I'm fine, thank you for letting us ask a couple of questions.
No, thanks for joining, all right, take care, guys, Cheryl.
I guess I have Michael Zipper.
Mr. Zipper, I mean, I guess state your name and your address and go ahead.
Hi, Michael Zipper, I'm at four twenty Old West Point Road West. So I'm a neighbor and I was just curious, I didn't see any renderings, and I think this follows on from Fred and Annie's comments from Old West Point Road. The road is a higher up elevation, so we're effectively, anyone on that road is looking down on the site. And I'm rather appreciative or think it's kind of cool that that there'll be a a green roof, which I assume will will help. Blend it into the landscape, but again, the we're at such a height on Old West Point Road, looking down, I'm sort of curious what you're doing to make it fit in and not seem. Like we're staring into the property each time we go down the road.
Okay. That it, Mr. Zipper?
Yeah, that was my question.
Cool, thank you, all right, Cheryl, anyone else?
I don't see anyone else, no.
Yeah, that was a pretty specific question, I think Mr. Zipper raised, so maybe you guys could give him a specific answer.
Sure, so, you know, to both of these questions about the views from Old West Point Road, we've definitely looked at that pretty extensively. One of the reasons that, as you noticed, it's primarily focused on four oh three, because that's technically the scenic overlay and we've geared the presentation here to that. But but it is exactly right that the the planted roof is oriented towards the back, towards Old West Point Road. Being mindful of the fact that you are looking down on it and and that's meant to to blend the the house into that view as well. So we certainly have been looking at it from both, both sides of the of of the site. And looking at how the house will sort of fit into the landscape. It's really meant to feel as though it's it's part of the, that slope coming down toward from the from the Old West Point Road down towards the house.
What is the distance from the of the house, if I may ask, from the house to Old West Point Road?
It's a little tricky to give you a, because of the angle of the. It's it's at a minimum. A hundred. There's a fifty-foot buffer here, it's about a hundred and fifty feet at least to the closest point. Yes, I would say at least a hundred and fifty feet.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right, so Cheryl, any other public speakers?
No.
Okay, board members, anything you want, I I'd like to just close the public hearing at this point, since we've got that and we get that business out of the way and then move from there. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kim, second?
Second, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Neil, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, extensions, okay, thank you, all right, so so thank you, Dennis, Ron and Steve, next steps from where we are.
We've closed the public hearing, you previously. Declared it a type two action pursuant to seekers that concluded your environmental responsibilities. So it's now a matter if you wish to consider. Authorizing resolutions, be prepared for the next meeting.
I absolutely concur.
Okay, so board members, I think there is, there are a couple of topics that have been raised with this property. One has been the the wetness, we heard this tonight, I think some of us observed that in our visit. As well as the the view shed, if you will, from from four oh three, given the the overlay that it's in. Do we want to have further conversation at our next board meeting, or do we want to direct resolutions at this point, like they just open that up for conversation? Anyone have an opinion? I'm not going to say anything, someone's gonna have to answer. Heidi, go ahead, Heidi, go ahead.
I mean, I I'm trying to understand what was meant by the amount of water that's on the site, does that mean that even if there's not. Wetlands that have been mapped on the site, that really, in fact, there is, there are wetlands on the site in in reality? And and if so. Or or something that's even if it's intermittent, but that we ought to be aware of. And I I guess I'm just wondering if the applicant has studied that at all, like what what's known about how much water is on the site? Because here we have someone who passes it all the time saying that it's actually very wet.
So I think we discussed that when we were at the site walk and that we were told that the area where the septic was going to go. Was not wet and that the wetlands were further to the west, I guess, is that correct, Jason?
But where the surface water flows is on the north end of the property, we've kept that site, we've kept that area generally undeveloped. I'll reiterate that there are, that there were no regulated wetlands found or regulated water courses observed on onsite by the. Natural Resources Officer Max, in addition, I will add that. All the soils on site. Are Charlton Chatfield. Complex soils, which are sandy soils, well-drained, type B, they're all type B, well, well hydrologic soil group, well-drained soils on site. There's no, there's no type C or type D. Type soils on site, so they're all well-drained soils, there may be some surface runoff initially coming off of. Old West Point Road. But it's it's all well-drained type B soils, so. We do recognize the fact that there is some some surface runoff that comes off of Old West Point Road. But that's generally on the north end of the property and we've, we've avoided that area with all the development.
Very helpful, Jason, thank you. For other board members, again, I'm trying to get a sentiment of the board, if people are ready or would like to have further discussion. We don't have to have the discussion tonight, but we can, because we have a lot to get through, but it would be good to get a sentiment whether we want to prepare resolutions, any other thoughts on that question?
Neil, did I miss it, or was there a vote to close the public hearing?
Yes, we, you did miss it, we.
I'm sorry, I.
That's okay. That's okay. My voice is, my voice is too soothing for you, Peter, go ahead.
I just wanted to know about the Osborne comment about the. The great flow of water that came through the valley, that that's been considered in the kind of like the hundred-year plan of the the building of the house?
I think, I think that's what Jason was talking about, but I think I'm not sure that covers a hundred years as much as it covers. It's an interesting question, Jason.
That was, that was through the north, that that flow of water was through the north and pretty much taken care of.
Right, that's, that's correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Others?
Neil, Neil, I had a, I had a quick question, and we've been talking about a green roof and 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 the amount of water that comes, that falls down. I guess it's David, is there, the the way the building is engineered, it's, they allow for a certain amount of saturation of the of the roof. The the load on the roof is going to change with the amount of saturation, this is all being taken into account?
Exactly, exactly, destruction engineers are taking all that into account and then, and we're doing a fairly deep. Planting medium in order to retain as much as we can. But the the roof is heavily engineered to account for that.
Okay, well, thanks, and I'd ask Chairman Zuckerman, you know, I. You know, there's, there seems to be a tempo change, I understand we have a lot to get to, and and we do, but I. I, when I, I feel like there's maybe some, still some questions out there, people have some concerns about this, I don't want applicant, I I don't think it's fair for applicants. Around Shakespeare to be feeling like something's not at the right tempo because we have so much to get to. And I appreciate your thoughts about maybe moving Shakespeare to a separate venue, just, it just seems like we're, there's a lot of good feedback, there's a lot of good talks, a lot of good discussion and. I just like, I sort of feel that about this, 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 this meeting that we have so much to get to. So, yeah.
It's a real balancing act, Neil, if you're.
It is.
If your point is we should slow down, that I I don't disagree, I think the problem will become, if we're going to do just previewing it, Shakespeare, oh, every month as a separate meeting.
I, yeah, I know, no, yes, it's definitely not easy.
Your eight bucks an hour goes to four bucks an hour, and I want to make sure you're getting fairly paid, no, but I'm, but I am serious and I'm committed to periodically, as I, as I intimated earlier. That if we have to have Shakespeare every couple of months as a separate meeting to give it the appropriate attention, we will absolutely do that.
Maybe that's just the way it's headed, yeah, because a lot of good questions, a lot of good feedback and.
Sorry, you're, I'm sorry, when you say that, you're referring to this conversation we're having now or the one we're going to have, I'm sorry.
The ones we're having now.
Absolutely, no, we're not, we're not, all we're discussing right now is whether we want to move to resolutions, we want to have a further discussion. I'm not going to share my view yet, as I'm asking each of you to give your views.
Yeah.
Others?
I don't, I think we're pretty much done with this, this particular project, you know, I don't know that we need to have more discussion next month.
Let's, let's see if I hear, I'd like to hear from Dennis and Laura, please.
I think we should move to a resolution for the project.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right, so then let's let the, let us do this. Sorry, who was that? Sorry, so so then may I have a a motion to direct Ron to prepare a resolution for the approval of this site plan?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Peter, Kim.
I'll second it.
Okay, lots of seconds. Okay, Dennis seconds, any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Sheila Roush, who was next door, has asked for a quick question, I think that's a very fair option, given that she is the most proximate neighbor and she did say she had her hand up. So, would you mind, Steve, if I abrogated our rules for this slight change, given this neighbor was on and.
Well, listen, here's, here's the deal, you can, you can take her comment, but the public hearing is closed, so her comment cannot inform your ultimate decision on the matter one way or the other. If she has a question, she wants information or something, that's fine, but if she's going to say, gee, you know, there's mammoth skulls buried on this property, you got a problem.
Well, that would be really problematic, so.
We'd have to open the public hearing, that's all, we just have to reopen the public hearing.
Well, laser. That's a consideration, yeah, if it's just a question, gee, is the pine tree plan going to be binding?
Well, which is interesting, that's what, that was her question, Steve, that's a good question, so.
I wasn't paying attention, you all pay.
I just didn't hear that moment, Cheryl, why don't you let Ms. Roush in so you can ask your question verbally?
Yes, I just moved her over.
All right, Sheila, go ahead with your question, please.
That was my question, it would have been so easy.
Well, we spent two minutes talking about it, Mr. Mr. Khan or David, would you like to respond to Sheila's question?
I mean, you can put all these little trees on your plan, I just wonder if you absolutely have to plant them. I can't hear a thing.
Mr. Khan is.
Forgive me, maybe David's better to answer this question because I don't get it, do we have to to put them? I want to put them.
Ah, you're better.
Ah, okay, I get it.
I mean, forgive me, I don't get the question, I'm sorry.
Steve, can I, let's do this, Steve, why don't you answer the question, because if it's on the site plan.
I think it's actually more of a Ron question, but in my understanding is that they're having a landscaping plan approved, they're showing certain plantings to be made in landscaping. Um, plan, and therefore they're obligated to put in what they say in the landscaping.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, Ron, would you agree with that?
If the, if the question is, are we in fact going to put the trees emphatically, yes. I. Yes, if that's the question.
Yeah, the matter that this this approved work is that you're approving the entire plan set of documents that includes the landscape plan. Once that action is, once that action is taken, then it becomes an enforcement action through the building department. But it's expected that the CEO will assure that those plantings get placed.
Thank, thank you, Ron, I hope that's clear enough, it's on the plan, they're going to have to do the plan. Okay, so we voted direct for, we vote, I think we, I think I called for the the motion, we passed it, we asked for any comments, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extensions, okay, so Ron, you've got your direction for the next meeting for. Extentions. Okay, so Ron, you've got your direction for the next meeting for resolutions and Mr. Khan and company will see you next month. Thank you. All right. Next, Riverview Industries. Ron, you want to catch us up on where we are?
Yes, I would.
Oh, Glenn. All right. I was gonna say, I said Ron, but Glenn, go ahead too.
I'm sorry. I thought you said Glenn. My fault.
Okay. Glenn, if you want to, go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. The crux of this thing is we've, we've had a, we've had a couple of meetings with you and you sent us the Conservation Board. We had several meetings with the Conservation Board that resulted in significant changes to the plan. I, we have met with the DOT. We have not submitted our DOT plan yet. But I'll point out to you that the plan calls for plantings and berms and blocking access to that flat area that people often park in besides Mr. Reichert's trucks. There is other stuff parking. So we'll be controlling the access to Route Nine and more, really more importantly, the access to the shoulders. So we have made all of those changes. I know Ron still has a punch list. And we'll certainly attend to them and we are, will attend to the DOT application. But I think we've ripened this this project into sufficiently to ask you to schedule a public hearing for next month and then I would be done with the presentation at this time.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, Ron?
Okay, the, the matter's been before the board for a long time. It started as an enforcement action from the code enforcement officer that led to the site plan application. When the board initially saw the project, which must go back at least a year, recognizing the environmental concerns that you, that are apparent from the site and the wetlands intrusions that exist, you immediately referred the applicant to the Conservation Board. He's been at that board for most of the past year. And most recently, you've just seen a letter from the Natural Resources Officer indicate that the Conservation Board is now satisfied with these latest plans. They've made significant reductions in the area that's to be used for the truck or vehicular parking. They put barriers around the limits to clearly define where this, these activities will take place. And as I said, the board, the Conservation Board is now satisfied and prepared to issue a permit. Planning Board has not yet conducted or made an environmental assessment. An EAF long form has been filed. But given that the Conservation Board is ready to sign off on the project, I wonder is if the board is now ready to just accept the part one EAF that's been filed, the Conservation Board's comments that they're now prepared to act. The, the Planning Board may be ready to make a secret declaration on the application.
So Ron, do us a favor and then compare and contrast this to what we're going to be doing to a couple of items on the agenda relative to part two document as well as that determination, given that that, this application was referred to conservation, that one is in a different stage. So you can compare and contrast the secret.
Sure. And in this, in this instance, as I said, there was very obvious environmental concerns that I think the board was most comfortable seeing the Conservation Board review and respond to. And obviously Conservation Board made their own site assessments and inspections. That differs in most cases. For example, the site plan thirty six twenty two Route Nine that's on later in tonight's agenda. That's a pretty straight ahead site plan that EAF has been filed. There's been no hard review from the Conservation Board that's been done. So in that instance, it may be appropriate to go through a part two assessment for the AF as well. Given that you'll be the primary agency that's reviewing the environmental impacts. Here for Reichert, it's clearly been a matter where the Conservation Board, which is charged predominantly with the evaluation and protection, the town wetlands and watercourses. Given the significance of their review and their readiness to now accept these latest plans, it may not feel that appropriate or necessary to go through a part two EAF, but it's entirely the board's decision.
Okay, so effectively you're suggesting that our, our review process has been done on our behalf by the Conservation Board?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's not true.
Go ahead, Steve.
You're a lead agency. They will give you information. Ron will give you information. You'll be provided with, as you have here, a draft completed part two, and I'm sure you've all seen it in your packets as far as that's where it goes. So when that's the case, if it's the board's pleasure, you can rely on what your consultants have told you and the input that you've received from the CB. You cannot delegate your secret responsibilities to another board. You can allow them to provide you with information to accept, but they aren't both the final decision makers. Now, on big, big projects like Horton, like Hudson, like Shakespeare Festival, it's the type of thing where notwithstanding that you're getting advice from your consultants, you're going to want to walk through the part two on your own. But for 90% of the app, and some boards do, some boards on every secret application that comes before them, they walk through the full panoply of considerations in the, in the part two and to say, we're going to check the small impact box, we're going to check the large, the moderate impact. Most boards don't. Most boards, when it's a kind of a run of the mill project where you've looked at the secret implications through your consultants or through assistance from something like the CB are willing to rely on that and just adopt it without actually going through the exercise of pulling out the part two and going line by line through it. Like I said, big projects, you know, really unusual ones, the board's probably going to want to do that on its own.
So let's get the sentiment of my colleagues because this is, I think there are some interesting points on both sides of the ledger related to that path. On the one hand, we do have the Conservation Board's input. On the other hand, we do have obviously a site that had its challenges that we all saw as we walked the property. Do folks feel comfortable making a declaration at this point on, on secret or would they like a meeting to discuss that in one more term, since we actually haven't gone through the part one as a group?
So I still have questions about this plan that's in front of us. So I'm wondering when the appropriate time would be to ask those questions? Would it be before we make a secret determination?
I, I, at least I think so. I'd let, I'd let Ron or Steve comment.
No, I completely agree. Anything, anything of concern should still be on the table for discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's the case. In fact, it's the board's practice. Although there are, you know, other alternatives, it's the board's practice not to make secret determinations until either a public hearing's been held or a public hearing's been waived. So you may want to hold off making a secret determination until, you know, you're, you're ready to, just about ready to take action on the project.
That's, if I may for a second, I that's your normal practice, exactly what Steve says. It's usually, usually at at the, at the end, when you actually make the determination, it's usually right immediately in front of your resolution. Would be happy to have any questions answered, but I would my real purpose here is to get through the public hearing so we can make any changes that come up with the plans. I don't want to put my client through another another round of revisions. We had some revisions for Ron. We'll probably have some revisions at the public hearing. And then you'll have a completed plan that you can, you can you can evaluate with in terms of parts two and and perhaps part three of the environmental assessment for.
Well, Glenn, Ron's memo says, if I'm, if I'm reading the right one, it says, most if not all technical comments offered previously do not appear to have been addressed. There again, provided on the enclosure for design engineers' attention. Is this plan ready for a public hearing or are there going to be substantial changes based on Ron's comment?
I don't, I, I don't think there's going to be any substantial changes in what the public will be evaluating. I mean, there's some details that are engineering details. I only read it briefly because I got it this afternoon. But I think the plan is substantially complete at this point.
Yeah, no, if I, if I could speak to that, the the technical concerns strictly relate to engineering matters that are, would not be significant for the public and wouldn't involve significant plan changes. It just technical, engineering issues that have to be addressed on plan.
All right. So you don't have a problem with a public hearing, Ron?
No, not at all.
Let's continue going on. The other board members, I think the question, the table is a public hearing, which we can then append, of course, our own board questions to the applicant. So thoughts on that? Anyone, anyone violently opposed to scheduling the public hearing? Laura, go ahead, please.
So I'm sorry, I think I'm, I missed a few things or maybe I'm just mixing up my documents. So there was an EF, an EAF part one, because I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, the, the original application documents, which, which as I say, go back more than a year. Including a, a full EAF. If, if you never caught up with those documents, I can forward them to your attention tomorrow.
I think, I think Ron, it'd be good to send to everybody. I feel like that's something, go ahead, Dennis.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Laura. Laura, anything more you want to say?
Yeah. And then also, so then there's the full AEF. So that's part one. And then so therefore what we're saying is, is that we all, they would have to then follow up with a part two. They have not filed that yet, correct?
No, I think they did.
They filed the full packet, part one.
Right off the bat, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, let me, let me correct. They filed a part one. A part two is not yet prepared. The Planning Board in their early reviews, going back more than a year, sent them directly onto the Conservation Board to await the outcome of what the Conservation Board would do with the project in terms of plan revisions or necessary mitigation. So it's only reason, it's only recently come back to the Planning Board to continue your review process. So part two has not been prepared. But as I said, it is a matter to recognize if you would, that the planning or the Conservation Board is now prepared to act and grant a permit from their perspective.
Okay.
I stand corrected that I thought it was a one and a two that were submitted at that.
Okay, so my comments are, and just my concerns are, one, I would love to read the EAF part one, since I didn't see it. The second thing is, is that this new plan that we're seeing, we haven't had time to comment. I know that those revisions were made based upon back and forth with conservation. But it may also, like, I want to just have some conversations of their use. And also just to note that we have some, well, I know that I had some serious questions regarding traffic and what was going to be submitted to the DOT for assessment. And basically the use of the site, considering the fact that trucks were going across Route Nine. So I want to kind of get a little bit more information regarding that before we even open up to a public hearing. Because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions that they're going to have to defend and it makes sense that they would have all that information on hand.
Very helpful. So, so Ron, I think we're getting mixed up with the EAF process, which again, we're going to cover in a couple of sessions. And, and with the role that conservation played here. And so with the sentiment I'm hearing of the board, they'd like to see the EAF one again, which obviously you said was submitted, but it sounds like a part two has not been prepared yet. And so
That's correct.
Seems like a conversation is necessary for this board despite the Conservation Board's involvement to see both the parts one and two, the draft of two as, which is our document, ladies and gentlemen. But to see one and two and then have a discussion on that before we set up a public hearing. I feel, I'll continue to hear the rest of my colleagues' views. But I think that's the sentiment so far of Kim and Laura at least. So I'll take anyone else's views, either with that view or separate. Dennis, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Neil, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I'd really like to review that again. If it's a year old, I, I don't think I could find my copy. So if that could be reissued, that'd be great.
Well, again, I think, I think what I'm hearing from Ron is part one was done, part two was not done. So we would need that as a draft, at least for us for a review. I think that may be appropriate. Or what do you think about that, Ron or Steve?
What's the question?
A part two. They have not drafted, according, according to Ron, they only have drafted their, their part one.
If that's the case, and of course I accept Ron's word on that, then, then they have to provide a part two. They don't necessarily need to provide it before the public hearing. But if you'd like to see it before then, certainly they can do that. It's easy enough for Glenn to go and check the boxes and hand it into you.
Folks, any thoughts? Go ahead, Ron.
I'll, I'll prepare a part two for Riverview and get it out to you within the next week or so. While in advance of your next meeting.
All right. Other, other thoughts on the proposed path?
So I'll ask my questions then at the next meeting.
That's correct. We're going to get everyone the data. And Glenn, I know we're not giving you what you want, but I think given that we haven't really engaged besides passing this to our friends at Conservation, I think it's an appropriate step if you don't, if you don't mind. So
All right. What am I going to do?
Well, that's wisdom, isn't it? As they say, maybe. Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Glenn. And all right. So on to thirty six twenty two Route Nine.
Okay, I'm just moving Adam and Keith over.
Hello? Cheryl, will I be able to share my screen?
Yep, go ahead, Adam.
Okay, so Adam Thiber here from Inside Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture PC. I'm also joined by Keith Schofield from LMV Landscape, I'm sorry, LMV Architecture. And since our last appearance before the board in February, we've made some pretty significant revisions to both the site plan and the architectural plans. So to jump right into the changes from the last time you saw it, most significant amongst them is the the length of the front building has been severely cut back. And the square footage has been reduced in this building by something approaching thirty eight hundred square feet. This has allowed us to pull the driveway and the stormwater practice further to the north, which allows us to keep the significant pine trees that are on the southern property line in this area to remain. In addition to significantly reducing the size of the front building, we've also shifted it further back into the site, which has opened up more space so that we could provide more substantial landscaping, some ornamental trees in front of the building. We've also beefed up the landscaping on the south side facade of the, of the front building. We've also shifted the rear building to the south to further provide further distance between it and the property to the north, to the northeast. And the, I guess the overall change here is a significant reduction in, in pervious cover. And so the proposed stormwater management practices may yet be reduced somewhat in size as the stormwater design is tweaked based on the reduced impervious cover. So I'll turn it over to Keith so he can speak specifically to some of the changes in the architecture. Keith's with us.
Good evening. Basically, what we did when we shortened the building, we emphasized the entrance ways with a slightly taller masonry bump up. So at the base level, we were previously discussing having a, a split face block. And that is going to transition over to a cast stone band, which is going to also act as window sills and headers over the doorways. And then we would transition, once we get above the windows to a board and batten, which would be a, a James Hardy product. And over the doorways, like I said, would be a veneer brick. Each of the main doorways will have a, a black canopy. And the storefront will be also black aluminum. On the sides, we carried over the the bump up on each end to kind of help with the emphasis of the corner. And we brought the masonry around from the the bottom veneer till we reached the bump up. And the rear, where the overhead doors and man doors for each tenant would be will be surrounded by metal siding. And same on the side elevations, the side elevations also have metal rib siding. And that will match the the hardy plank siding, which or the hardy board and batten siding, which is in the front. So at the bottom of that sheet, you see the color schemes of the the charcoal colored split face with the slightly smoother charcoal cast stone, which would be followed by the gray veneer brick above. And so the James Hardy product will be a pearl gray, followed by a black storefront aluminum. And the metal building panels will be a parchment, which is a compliment to the James Hardy. The awnings at the entrances and will be a black aluminum grade and any of the trim work that's accompanying the Hardy panel products will have a PVC white trim. On the rear building, the second building, we're carrying a similar look into the back. So when you come in the main driveway, your focal point is on the two entrance doors for the two tenants. In the rear, the building will also have a masonry front band along the bottom, made of split face block at the window sills and transition up to a cast stone band. And in the back, instead of having any Hardy, it's just going to be aluminum metal building panel.
Keith, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. You've mentioned the name James Hardy about fifty times. What is James Hardy, or who is James Hardy?
Hardy is is a brand name. It's a cementitious siding material.
I'm sorry, every other board member knows who James or what James Hardy is, but that is something I don't know what that is.
Sorry. Basically, they're what you would find on an upscale residential product where they do clavert siding, since cementitious materials do not absorb the water like a natural wood would be. The painted finish on it lasts up to fifteen years versus a painted wood finish, which could, you know, need need repainting every five.
It may help the boards to understand that the recent renovations at the town hall include that Hardy plank on the exterior.
Okay, continue, sir.
So I think to just to summarize the the changes that that we've that we've undertaken with regard to the site plan and to the architectural plans, we've we've looked to address a number of the the board's concerns with regard to the overall extent of the development, which has been significantly reduced. And we've looked to maintain more of the existing tree line along the southern property line. And of course, with what you're seeing, as far as the details of the architecture and the materials there, too, looking to have the the development blend in with the landscape and have both buildings kind of speak this speak the same language. So that being, that all being the case, obviously, you know, again, we would and in addition to having worked with with Ron on the part two EAF, we would, we would ask the board to schedule a public hearing for the May meeting.
Okay, Ron?
Yes, you've got a technical review from my office. As the applicant indicates, you know, there's been very significant changes based on prior guidance or concerns that the board has raised. Most significant significantly relative to visibility issues and the massing of that front building, as well as concern or desire to see some further protections for the residential activity in the rear. I I think those the applicant has responded to those things in some fashion. Separate from that, the board had asked me to prepare a part two EAF. So the board could go through that document as well, to better define if there's any other further studies or information that you want before you move forward to a public hearing. And I had presented that to you as part of my technical review that was provided to you. I I trust that the board has seen it and been through it. If we want to walk through that document, you can see this. You've been through it before. It asks very standard conditions in terms of potential environmental concerns, the impacts on land, surface water, groundwater, things of the sort. So it goes through a variety of concerns that the board might have. For myself, I've identified numerous areas that there could be potential impacts, but none rise, in my view, to a moderate or large impact, which may occur that warrants the applicant to offer further mitigation, with the exception of traffic. If you turn towards the rear of the document, you can identify that traffic is the only issue that I've identified as a concern that warrants further information from the applicant's representatives. Specifically because they've previously given you a project narrative. But it's very generic in terms of numbers, duration, types of vehicles. It's recognized that there's going to be landscaping activities on the project. So there's going to be very large shipment of project and deliveries into the site. And landscapers typically are driving numerous vehicles with trailers and the sort. And it'd be better to get some quantification of that information, only because it lies on the Route nine corridor, and and we all recognize the concern that that could present either in the morning or evening rush hour. So at that point, I'd just be able to respond to any questions you might have relative to how I responded or answered the type two EAF.
Keith, before I go to my colleagues, do you have anything to add?
No, um, the the type two, the type two, the part two EAF is is helpful. I would recommend that, as is the board's practice, you don't attempt to make a decision on it right now. Just to inform your decisions to whether you're going to ask for more studies before you hold your public hearing, or if you feel that you're ready to hold the public hearing, and then after you hear from them, maybe you'll need additional studies or input at that time.
Colleagues. Questions about the application and or in process? Kim, go ahead, please.
So I think we definitely need a traffic study. I was trying to understand, in the drawings, there's a vehicle maneuvering. And and there's on one side, there's, you know, it says tractor trailer, and then there's a very small box on the right hand side that has a bunch of why I don't really understand what I'm seeing there. Also, there seems to be a desire to have two driveways, one of which is two way, and one of which is only one way, which I think is sort of dangerous and confusing. So, you know, but given that, you know, we put CRS through a traffic study, and this seems to be something where there are going to be a lot of trucks coming in and out of different sizes, I think we need to be consistent and make sure that we understand what the traffic is going to be here and what really what the DOT requirements are in terms of driveways, because it was my understanding in the past that on Route nine, the DOT didn't want two way driveways necessarily, certainly not two driveways that do different things.
So if if I could, if I could speak to that, just a few, a few clarifying points. We show in our plan with regard to the maneuvers that are in the plans, we we show these maneuvers to show that they are possible. I believe in in the set that has been presented, we're showing that a refuse vehicle would be able to access the site, make the maneuvers that they need to make in order to pick up the refuse and leave the site. The other one that we're showing is a Y is a Nash though WB fifty, which is a which is a large truck that would, you know, that would maybe occasionally be making deliveries on the site, and we need to prove out that that would be able to maneuver on the site. I think a distinction that's important here is that this this is not ESP, this is not Mid Hudson concrete that are getting, you know, they're wholesale retailers that are getting thirty precast concrete septic tanks delivered twice a week. These are contractors. These are electricians and plumbers and carpenters and the like, landscape contractors. And we had spoken about the the type of vehicles that would be coming through. There would be the odd occasion where there might be a delivery, and so we do prove out the the maneuverability of a larger truck to move through. This is not a a site that's going to be a storage ground for big tractor trailers all the time. This is, you know, you're going to have, you know, if you have a landscaper, you might have you know, a smaller dump truck or, you know, contractor level pickup truck, maybe with with a dump on the back. But we're not talking about having big tractor trailers in there all the time. It's just part of our practice and part of the DOT procedure to show that certain types of vehicles can get in and out of the site. So that's that that's about on that. We are engaged with the with the DOT. You know, those those issues would be certainly sussed out as we go through the driveway permit with the DOT. The other thing I want to point out is that the two driveways are they're they're both two way. We envision the southern driveway to be the one that would handle, I guess, more intense use because it has the straight shot back into the site. So certainly, any truck traffic would use that route. We're envisioning the northern driveway as two way, but would serve as smaller vehicles. You know, employees with passenger cars, customers, those kinds of things, smaller vehicles on that end. But both of them would be two way.
But you've got, you do have eight, you know, your door doorways for at least eight separate businesses in there. Right, so a lot of, you know, it's a lot of employees.
Right. And so we've spelled out with from our from our first submission, and we've kind of spelled out in the plans, we we envision it to be a maximum of eight units. And so we're thinking with the number of employees that we're anticipating, it's something in the neighborhood of thirty trips a day, something of that nature. But again, this is not, this is, you know, a contractor office and 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 storage. This is not a wholesale retail establishment where you have contractors coming in and big deliveries of these, you know, massive objects being moved in and out multi time a day. This is, these are offices, and they're going to have some storage on the site as well. So I think there's it's an important distinction. So I think we we get a little, we get some cross wires with the nature of some of these businesses, and it's important to distinguish, this is a contractor with an office and some storage on the site against some of the other projects that have come across here where we're storing sick mass numbers of vehicles, or you have a wholesale retail operation that's bringing supply in and out on a regular basis.
Okay, um, so another question I have is the lighting. Just where exactly those canopy lights are going to go, where the wall lights go, and whether they point up or down?
Yeah, if I'm not sure, did I did this my chair screen drop off? I can bring it, I can bring that back up. So the lights that we're showing here are these these black boxes. And I can jump to our lighting plan that shows the photometrics.
Right. I'm just wondering where they where the canopy lights are, for example, are they underneath a porch roof, or are they up in the air shining down?
Yeah, we're showing, we're showing a canopy light in each of the overhangs. And then in other areas to to fill in the light that's that's necessary, we have building mounted lights, all dark sky compliant, full cutoff. And obviously, based on the photometrics, we're showing no, no light spill. And these would operate obviously during business hours, after hours, they would operate on a a motion sensor just for security purposes.
Okay. Then the only other question I guess I have at the moment is is what the what's the total length of the front building?
Currently, it's it was cut down about fifty feet. I think Keith might be able to speak to that. I think we're down to.
I think around one hundred and sixty five feet. I I don't have a drawing to to scale in front of me, but I can.
Just that didn't seem to be on the plan, so I just wanted to know what that number was, because.
Yeah, it's about it's about fifty feet shorter than than what was previously presented.
And is there any way you could, you know, you know, show, I don't know, if maybe show us what? No, it's all right. I was going to say, show us an overlay, but that's not possible at the moment. So in terms of the tree cutting on the right hand side, as you're facing the building, you're going to leave the pine trees there, and does that mean that the rest of the trees that are going to go?
If if, actually, if you don't mind, I do have I have a photo of this area, if if the board is agreeable to for me to, I mean, obviously, it wasn't, it wasn't presented, but if if I could bring it up on the screen, I could show you kind of what we're what we're doing. Let me just bring up the photo. All right. Are you seeing that photo now?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so having shifted the building to the north and and obviously thereby the driveway in the stormwater practice, it's allowed us to to keep this cluster of pine trees and and more pine trees that go back to the east in this direction. And so essentially, what's going to be replaced, what would be taken down and replaced is this kind of stand of kind of viney kind of invaded maple trees. The adjustment that we made was specifically, you know, looking to to maintain these mature pines. In this area, this this cluster would come down and would be replaced by native evergreen trees, which would obviously mature and and kind of eventually fill, you know, the same role that the evergreen trees on this end do. So you can see that if I jump back to the plan. You can see, you can see these pine trees in here, several of those. There's a couple of oaks in that area, some birches. And it's really just these these couple of maples in this area, those kind of more scraggly looking ones that we saw in the photo that would be that would be taken out and replaced with with evergreen trees.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's it for me for now.
Other other comments or questions? Laura, please.
So I have two questions. The first question, I just want to jump on what Kim said with regard to the traffic study. So I hear what you're saying with regard to the use of the space. Ultimately, I know that's important, but I think what we're alluding to is we put CRS under a great scrutiny about the frequency of the traffic that was coming and going to the space. So I don't care if it's a car or a truck or a trailer. You know, there needs to be some sort of analysis or or an assumption of projection. You know, and what is that? Is that between nine and five? Is that between seven and three? You know, we asked them to provide it, and they did. And so I think that we can, we can ask the same as well. And then my second question is, you know, you guys haven't provided an elevation with regard to the plantings. You have a site plan. And I think one of the things that I think we're going to want to review, or the public will also want to see, which we did also with CRS, is to see where the plantings are with regard to the entrances and exits and the driveways of your location. And also how that front planting is going to shield and or integrate the architecture itself. So I don't know if there's some way of doing a planting elevation or something, just so that we can see what.
We could put together, we could put together a rendering.
Okay. That's it for me.
Laura, thank you. Anyone else? So my sense is, thank you. My my sense is that a traffic study is relatively important, and I know, Laura, I I assume Heidi would doubly support what you're saying, while it's a slightly different physical place. support what you're saying while it's a slightly different physical place than CRS. And maybe the the vehicles are different. It is the same road, which we sent a letter to the town board on, which is a road we are all getting concerned about with volume of traffic. So, Mr. Thiberg, I think it would be best for us to have you create a traffic study. Ron can give you the details and some of the questions Kim has raised and certainly some of the conversation that's in the public record from the CRS application, I think, would be instructive about what we're gonna ask about volume and time of day and and the types of vehicles. I know you've alluded to that, but I think we need to see some detail. I think that will be an important input for us to evaluate the part two that Ron drafted. Anyone else want to add to that? So I think that's an important next step, and I think I think we would need to see that. And I think it would be valuable input for the public prior to a public hearing, to my view. Any other, Ron, would you concur with that approach?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll work directly with the applicant to provide that information.
Does that make sense, Mr. Thiberg?
Yeah, I, you know, if that's, if that's the direction we want to go. And the sense is that those two things could not be parallel tracked where we could be pursuing. Obviously, we are pursuing the DOT permit. We're going through that procedure. We're going through a you know, we would go through additionally the the traffic study. And if those two things could not be parallel tracked, in the board's opinion, with the public hearing process.
Yeah, the problem is, Adam, I think we feel like for the public to have to be informed to give comments, they kind of need to know what you think the traffic is gonna be. It's, I don't, I don't, I think it's, you know, you got, you can't go to the, you can't, you can't comment on the movie if you haven't seen the movie. You can't, the critic can't write the movie review unless he's seen it. So in this case, the analogy being you, the movie is yours traffic study.
Understood. Obviously, the traffic study is the of primary interest in what we've been talking about tonight with regard to the to anything else on the site. I'd love to have any other comment that the board might have, you know, as we're, you know, we we continue to go back to our client and, you know, we're gonna, we gotta do this, we gotta do this. Just want to make sure that if we're going back to say that we need to do a traffic study in addition to the other things we've done, that we can get any other feedback, just
Well, you've heard, you've heard some from Ms. Connor, you've heard some from Ms. O'Connell. I'll just throw out for for me, for the Route Nine non-retail facilities, I've been consistent for many years. One seventy-five sixty-five talks at length about screening. If it's not a retail business, it should be screened as much as practical. And so I, whatever you do, you should do more. It should be screened. This is a very large building. No matter how much you've taken it down, one hundred and sixty-five feet in length is not an insignificant length of the building. That is a very large building. You know, it's, 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 you know, not a football field yet, but it's getting getting close. So it is not gonna be insignificant to those who are driving by. And so we need to really think about screening because that's, that's the intention of it, back to the notion of the community plan. And I must say, I would, I would actually want to have a conversation. And I didn't, in the EF part two, clearly, one of the topics is community character and community plan. For me, at least, whether this fits in what in line with what we've been building in our comprehensive plan is something I want to just talk about. This is a large building. It's a large building. This is, I, I, I don't have data for you, but my guess is this is possibly the largest buildings in Phillips Town if it's built. I, 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 I'm gonna guess from a frontage perspective that Magazzino is seventy-five feet in frontage length, just guessing. Maybe, maybe it's more, but it is not one hundred and sixty-five feet in frontage length. And so that's a lot of physical terrain to be going north and south passing by. And so I want to, A, understand the screening, which is not an EAF point, but I absolutely want to understand. And I may even, I don't know, Steve or Ron, we don't actually do referrals to the to the comprehensive plan because it's not a standing board. But it does seem like something that is worthy of a viewpoint, at least for me. And maybe it's something we'll just hear from the public hearing.
Yeah, I don't think you can be involved in sending specific applications over, except in the context of calling to the comprehensive planning committee's attention, issues that you may have discovered in the course of a review.
That would Would it be okay, would it be, would it be okay to ask the comprehensive plan chair to come and speak to us about their view of this application in light of its size?
Well, it's not prohibited, and certainly there's nothing that prevents him or her from doing that. But usually, it's a one-way street. If you want to call to their attention something that's come to your attention in the course of a review, that's just fine. You say, hey, look, you know, nine has got a lot of traffic on it. And gee, maybe you want to take into consideration ways to calm or mitigate traffic impacts when you look at the but to go say to them, you know, gee, come and comment on this specific application really isn't, isn't something that's commonly done.
There. All right. Other thoughts besides directing the traffic study that you want to give the applicant guidance on anybody? Going once?
Go ahead, Heidi.
I was just gonna say that I do, I think it's, it's, it's an improvement that the the tall evergreens are gonna, are gonna be kept in place. I would just note, it would be great if that could stay in any plan henceforth at any rate. So I hope that
The intention is to keep them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else?
So I, I guess there's only one thing, you know, that a little clarity on what's gonna be stored in those back areas. Because we talked about that before, if it was gonna be machines or whatever, and just if there's any kind of a, you know, limitation on, you know, like how full they can get, you know, that kind of thing. I don't know if that, Ron, if that is appropriate. And also, just to doubly ensure that the salt and the pesticides that potentially get stored there cannot leach out since it is over the aquifer.
For for clarity, sorry, the pesticide issue, the herbicide issue is, that would be something that was a possible, something that the the applicant might be able to potentially offer to a potential tenant, not as something that would absolutely happen. And if it were, it would have an internal internal for the building. That that would not be stored in the outdoor storage areas. And that would all be subject to DEC regulation and inspection and everything that goes along with that.
But salt is still a concern for the aquifer, and that's
Agreed.
Pass there. Yeah. And then just in terms of like outside storage of, you know, vehicles and equipment and is there, I seem to remember we had a conversation about this before and and there was you know, a question of like, how much stuff is gonna get stored out there? Or we can, do we have any restrictions on that? And that was what I was asking Ron about because I remember him speaking about that.
You know, it's a question that was raised actually in in the overall view of traffic and site utilization. So that warrants further discussion as part of your interest in understanding tra- traffic movements and and duration. So that likewise should be provided by the applicant.
Okay. Kim, anything else?
No, that's it for now.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then, Adam, you have your direction, I think. Ron will help you as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Garrison Golf Course in Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. So, Cheryl, if you can let everyone in. So folks, it's nine fifty-one PM. I don't know what folks' energy level is at this point. We've been going for two hours and twenty-one minutes. I'm happy to to figure out if we can, we can, we can keep doing this till ten thirty. That's three hours or even go to eleven PM for three and a half. What are people's energy levels?
You asking me, Mr. Chairman?
Dan, Dan, you've been warming up in the, whatever.
I'm ready.
I know, that's, that's why we love you. That's what Vietnam will do for you, Dan. They'll get you ready for the, for anything. But, folks, anyone, just, I'm serious, like, I want to gauge everyone's energy level because this is very important, and yet I can't have you guys all conk it out at me. So ten thirty, okay for everyone? Hands up. Can I get a hand up? Ten thirty? Okay, eleven o'clock, folks? One no, one up. I'm not, Kim seems like the only one up for eleven o'clock.
I just feel like, you know, we're all here and they've got all their people here, you know. If we can stand it, we should just keep going.
Well, the thing about it, Kim, is that they're gonna be submitting revised EAF. So all you're trying to do is kind of skim over to begin with. And then there was discussion about a special meeting perhaps. So I mean, I want to start into it. I think that's a fine idea to really try to, you know, make this a substantive session. Well, you know, it's not my decision, obviously, but if you ask
Well, it is, it is a democracy and such. So can I get a hand raised for eleven PM, please? Okay, well, that's, that's not, that doesn't seem like it. So let's get started. Here's Dan and I talked about this. Let's just go through what three things we're gonna try and start doing. Dan's gonna give us a quick summary on the changes of the use related to the golf course. Then we're gonna do a flip through the part one. We have asked questions before, but I want to hit any other questions, people, on the part one. The part one is the applicant's document. I'll just keep repeating that. And then if we have time, we'll start it on the part two, which is our document that they offer author on our behalf. What I know we could try to, depending on time, is given that Dan is revising or the organ, the group is revising the EAF tied to the golf course, at a minimum, it will be good to have people's views on what areas of the EAF, of the eighteen components, they would like to start seeing additional pieces of study done. That's the minimum I'd like to get done in the EF part two. It's not your only chance, of course, but just part of the conversation. The public who is listening dies, there's a lot to do. So we are not rushing it. We're trying to do this. What we are gonna do, the last thing I'll do tonight, is I'll conclude it by trying to schedule a special meeting, not on the same night as the plane board. We do three hours straight on this. And we get you, we get some progress going. I appreciate your patience. You can imagine that this is not the only application in town, and we are, we are a busy, but still a group of volunteers. So, Dan, why don't you get started on what the change is and that we're gonna see with the new revised DAF?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Dan Hollis. I won't take time to introduce our whole team because we're all here and they'll have a part of it once we get into the EAF one and two, if we get there. I think my letter of April first set forth in general terms what the changes are. But I thought it would be important tonight because he's here for Chris Davis to speak as to the fleshing out each and all of the terms as to the land distribution now and the cessation of the golf. So, Chris, if you're nearby, I'll turn it over to you. And then, Mr. Chairman, then we'll have Jan Johannes and our environmental consultant run our aspect of the part one, part two review. Chris?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me all right? All right, I'll be, I'll be very short so that we have time. I admire the stamina of this group. This is really public service. Oh, I'll very briefly go back to the beginning. You know, what we purchased twenty years ago here was a failing golf course. And it was packaged as a development opportunity. The previous owner had already sold off eight or nine lots, and Chip and I just found their original plan, which was for another forty-eight houses. And that still allowed the golf course to exist. They were built on the periphery of the golf course, and the broker told me that left us a free option on developing maybe townhomes on the golf course. So that's what we came into. So goal one was to prevent this intense residential development. Goal two was to find a business plan that was consistent with these conservation goals. Because I'm a big believer that conservation of a used landscape like this doesn't mean abandonment. And we already had a meaningful employee base, and it was already, in many ways, a community asset or an asset that was valued and used by the community. So we made the decision back then that the best business plan that we could determine that was consistent with the conservation goals was to really invest in hospitality. The site has, is a magnificent site, and it's fundamentally been in the visitor and hosting business since the nineteen twenties. But we knew that would take time to ramp up. Golf had been in a thirty-year decline. And right after we bought the course, we had what was in our business called a dead cat bounce. It was Tiger Woods. And Tiger Woods created this brief sort of resuscitation in the golf industry. And that gave us some breathing room. And the golf course was profitable for four or five years or some number of years in the beginning of our ownership. While Chip and his team were able to really ramp up the goal, which was to build the hospitality business. Event space was built, big kitchens, capacities, our PDD filing to build the inn to host conferences year-round and to make this that core part of the parcel a inactive business. So we were on a path to close it, golf, that dead cow bounce lasted until about ten or fifteen years ago and began its glide slope down. We made a decision a couple of years ago to move towards closing it. COVID postponed that whole thing. It became one of the only permitted outdoor activities. So we postponed it. We last presented to you with the idea that we had hoped maybe to be able to transition to a nine-hole course. That was partly my thinking that it would be a way to gradually let people adjust, develop new habits and and make a transition more gradual. Now, that really brings us up to where we are today. When I last met with you, I described what the partnership with the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival accomplishes. I'm not gonna revisit that, just to say that it keeps this incredibly cherished and valuable artistic asset in our community. It provides a synergy, a real synergy synergy for our original business. Between the two of us, we probably are the two largest or two of the largest employers in our town. We think that's important for a thriving community to have good local employers. So that's what we talked to you last time. But I presented a plan that unfolded in stages with a first parcel and then a challenge parcel. And then we would look at a nine-hole course and gradually figure out what to do with the remaining land. And what I realize now is just like the goal of phasing out golf, that that was a flawed approach. We've heard the feedback from this group and from the community, and it did two things that were wrong. It created limitations on Shakespeare's planning because, in a sense, they knew they would end up with the full site, but they had to stage that they were only gonna get it in parcels. So it put limitations on their planning, and it created a lot of uncertainty in the community, even though I would still be the owner about, well, what if I lost my mind and decided to go back to the original plan and try to plow in some townhomes or do some affordable housing or something on the remaining land? And so people were understandably nervous. So what we announced in the paper and that what we're coming back to you with is a conservation solution and a plan that encompasses the entire community, the entire property. So with that, we could just put up one slide here that I'll address briefly, Dan, if we can put that up.
Yeah, Ally's gonna do that.
Thanks, Ally.
Yep, give me one second. Can you see this?
If you could move it up a little more, Ally, because the last page of my letter is taking up too much of the screen.
All right. Well, you know, functionally, this shows one hundred and fourteen acres going to Shakespeare, sort of the entire upper parcel less that house lot. We actually are in talks with a conservation organization for that fifty-six acres. And in our visit with them, they were so attuned to the sensitivity of Phillips Brook and the environmental importance of that, they were actually now looking to add an additional seventeen acres to them from Shakespeare that would be the most environmentally sensitive area. That parcel of land, that fifty-five or fifty-six acres plus the seventeen, that that fifty-five acres is functionally today already sort of a community park. It is an area where people walk their dogs and cross-country ski. They all, all of the neighboring houses use it. And the goal for a conservation organization is for us to work on rewilding and continuing that functionally as a community park. But it will be entirely conserved. There will be no development. There'll be a conservation plan and a rewilding plan for all of that fifty-six acres and probably an additional seventeen of land that feeds down along Phillips Brook. So we will, but functionally, think of that upper parcel as going to Shakespeare rather than in stages going entirely. And the cessation of golf makes that an easier transition for them because they don't have to accommodate the one or two holes of a nine-hole course that might have been there for some years. So that was the plan. With that, I want to end with one final comment, which is just to say, I have been, you know, one, incredibly impressed by sort of the thoughtful comments that we've gotten from people in this board and the uncertainties that were raised and my desire to address them completely and comprehensively. But I've also been really discouraged by some of the shocking rumors and absolute crap that I'm hearing in the community and that's coming out. So I wanted to highlight one additional thing, which is that the idea of this being overrun, turning into, you know, crowds like the Bear Mountain picnic area and Breakneck, they're absurd on the face of it. They're absurd on the face of it. This will be private property and the mission, both of the garrison as it has been operated for 20 years. And Hudson Valley Shakespeare require a bucolic setting. You know, all of these things are part of their brand. The idea of people, you know, ramsacking this place like the Bear Mountain parking lot is crazy. But there's one other thing that I just want to raise with this group as one final consideration, which is that 29 acre lot. That is for me. That is where I intend to build the house where I will live out the last third of my life. This landscape, this particular landscape has been part of my life's work. And the idea that I will be the closest neighbor, the only neighbor that is directly contiguous with the Shakespeare Festival. The idea that I would be planning somehow or allow it to have, not have enough restrictions to prevent it from being overrun, overbuilt or repurposed. And my vision here is to go for a walk seven years from now, 10 years from now, instead of dodging golf balls and picking up cigar butts. On an artificial green lawn that's using a million gallons of water and untold pesticides and herbicides. That I'm going to run into poets and writers and actors and musicians in a restored landscape. And, and that is what our vision is for this. This is what we're creating. The restrictions that are put in place, which are actually going to take care and protect this entire parcel are with that vision in mind. And that 29 acres is where I will be living. So I just wanted to put some of the really extreme. Nonsense that's out there to bed and really leave us time to be very responsive to the thoughtful and engaged concerns of, of the people at this board and the people that have. Made comments that are much more thoughtful. So with that, Dan?
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chris. Board members, questions on again, this first topic of the change in use with the change in the proposal? Any questions? None. I have one. So I just wanted, for purpose of clarity, when I'm looking at the same map. On where the nine holes were going to be. Let me just be clear. I'm asking this because I'm trying to interpret what we have been starting to evaluate with what will be what we're now going to evaluate. So what you're calling, I guess, parcel for conservation, which is mostly where the nine holes were, with the exception, I guess, of. Seven, eight and nine, maybe holes seven, eight, or maybe it's eight and nine on the, on the east side of Snake Hill. What is going to happen specifically on the land that was the nine holes?
Yes. So that conservation parcel, which is, as you rightly say, hole two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those holes will all be donated in fee to a conservation organization. And my charge to them in that donation will be to work on a plan with the community for rewilding. Allowing particularly holes four, five and six to remain accessible to the community as they are now and as they are used now. And their interest is deeply in the natural resource protection of Phillips Brook, which runs along that parcel particularly and crosses it.
So just to put words in your mouth, Chris, nothing's going to happen in that property besides walking and. I don't know, snow shoeing.
Absolutely. Nothing is going to happen in that part.
That's, and then the holes that are to the east of Snake Hill, the ones that are. Eight and nine, the ones that are on the, I guess, the going up the hill that we all hiked a few weeks ago as we finished the day. What is happening on those holes?
Those holes are added, you know, some of them were a part of the 29 acres, but they will primarily be added to the Shakespeare parcel. So that will, where the holes, what would have been nine and then one will now be part of Shakespeare. And that I think will give them a lot of flexibility to address some of the concerns that had been raised about citing in their project. And as I say, the only caveat is some of the land that runs right along Phillips Brook at the very north side of this map. We may additionally convey and because I think it's environmentally sensitive and maybe better in the land trust hands. And I think Shakespeare's been very open to that.
Okay. So again, so I'm hearing is it's going to go from being used for balls and sticks and. And carts to being nothing. Because I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we're not here. There's not another use that we don't know about.
No, no, there's no, no, no additional use that you don't know about. No.
All right. Thank you for that impassioned view. Again, last go, any board members, questions on this change in use? Okay. All right. So let's, thank you, Chris, for that. That was very helpful and it's very generous of you as well. Board members, the next plan is to go through part one. Now, part one again is their document. They submit to us. And I know we have asked and many of our questions in the past, Kim reminded us of this earlier, are tied to the part one. But it seems very important for us to have one more shot. Sorry, the train is in the station here in Garrison. It's quite loud in the background. But good, it seems like a good opportunity for us to review and ask any questions along any parts of the part one. I think it may be, given it's 13 pages in length, it may be judicious to go by board member for their points versus going page by page. That may be a better approach.
Would you want us to share part one?
Well, I think everyone's got the part one. Hopefully everyone's got it. I mean, I'm not going to call my board members, but we could, I think. We can just start with any board member who has questions around the part one to raise those issues. Dennis, please. Dennis, you're on mute. You just went back on mute.
On, on page seven, it's for clarification. There was question regarding additional power requirements, any upgrades to substations and such. And they're referencing New York State gas and electric. I'm assuming that's a drawson down there.
I think that's a typo. It would be Central Hudson.
Okay. Can that be clarified? Because I get concerned when I start seeing misinformation that might have been. Copied and pasted from one document to another. I just want to make sure that there are no other. Conditions that might not be true because you start thinking about you gave, and it might not pertain now because of the. Reduction of the golfing portion of it, but the use of water and sanitary facilities, things like that.
Yeah, this was not.
Just clarified and to reiterate that there's no other upgrades that are required for. I'm assuming there's additional power usage compared to a golf course, compared to theater, theater lighting. Indoor theater, things like that.
You're, you're cut out in the beginning. Could you reference the page again?
Page seven. Item would be D2. K.
Yep. This was not a, not a cut and paste document. A lot of effort went into the preparation of these documents. That was, it's an error. I apologize for it, but there was no information here that was taken from another project. And I believe.
Okay, I'm just saying it's something that got brought over and.
It did not get brought over.
It's a matter of reading utility bill.
I apologize for the error.
Okay, if that's just to be clarified. Yeah, to be clarified and that there's no other upgrades. Again, I'm thinking that there's more power usage with this type of use.
Correct, but it's asking whether we need a, a substation, a new or upgraded or.
Yeah, I, I understand what the question is. I, your, your answer to it though, is what I'm questioning.
Okay. I think, I think it's answered correctly that we're not going to need to.
Okay, that can just be verified. That's all.
Leave it accurate. Thank you.
Other board members with questions on part? Heidi, please.
I have, I think this is probably going to be gone into later, but I just have a question about, and I'm sort of. Almost leery of asking it now because so much of the property is going to be preserved for wildlife, which is fabulous. I, my question is just in the wildlife portion of this document. Whether there's going to be, I mean, this is partly based on comments that have come in from the public where. There's been a lot of questions about what wildlife actually exists on the property in the, and whether or not, you know, it's significant in the golf course. Parts of the property. And I know some of the responses that parts of those, those parts of the property are going to be partially returned to. You know, of a meadow and, and some trees, et cetera. But my, my question is, has there been any kind of sort of. Natural resource inventory done or wildlife inventory done with respect, for example, to the bats? To see like what is actually on that prop, on the parts of the property that will now have buildings on them. So obviously not the part that's going to be rewilded, but the parts of the property where there's going to be. You know, substantial building going on. Do we know if there's a population of bats that live there? And I don't know too much about bats, whether they might be living in the old trees, some of which might have to be taken down because of the. The work on the Snake Hill Road access and that kind of thing. I, I'm trying to understand whether. The bill, putting these, so many buildings on a portion of the property. Will actually significantly impact communities of wildlife or, or whether. You know, so I could sort of assess that.
Well, we have started our, our coordination with the DC Natural Heritage Program and we've written to them. We've provided them our plans. And they've indicated to us the potential presence and proximity to the site of the northern long-eared bat and the bald eagle. And they gave us a rough idea of their location, which was offsite and close to. Five miles from, from the subject property. We do intend on evaluating that further in the part three EAF. And, and we're going to adhere to the DC guidelines as to. Limitations on, on when you can remove trees, for instance. So we don't have all the answers yet on that particular issue, but it's an area that we want to evaluate further in the part three EAF.
Great, thank you.
Need the old tidy?
Well, I mean, I assume that there's going to be more traffic. There's references to the traffic situation as well. And you know, and the fact that the current road situation will have to be changed at least at Snake Hill Road. But I, I mean, not everybody's aware of that. I mean, I assume that's just going to be dealt with down the road. So that was my only other comment on, on the part one document.
Yeah, when we get to our detailed part, so again, I, I think we can, we can, we'll get to in the third stage of this conversation about when we get to the part two, what areas you want to see additional study. I'll take that as a, you want more on transportation and I think you'll get an emphatic support from me and others, but. If there anything you have on the traffic portion of the part one, feel free to raise it now.
I mean, not, nothing that's not going to be covered in that traffic study, I assume, because the traffic study, I assume will include the road widening. Right? Because just the issue of whether will, how much widening will there have to be Snake Hill Road and how much. Widening of the accesses, et cetera. I guess it, that, that's encompassed by the traffic study, I guess, right?
Well, I think it's all depends what questions you want. A study is not a study. So I think there's lots of questions that could be asked. There's volume. There's flow. There is, we obviously have discussed frequency, lines of sight. And we obviously spent a lot of time with CRS on a different topic, which was gargantuan trucks. Infrequent, but still large. Here we're talking about a greater volume, but not of trucks, at least not a lot of trucks. So I think it's important to raise those questions, but we are, we're going to do that when we have a much, we're going to, we can do it now and we're going to do it when we have a longer period to go through the EAF. And of course, the floor, the floor is yours. You have other questions. Ron, do you want to say something? No, sorry.
I just wanted to point out, and we can discuss it when we get into the parts two and the three outline, but. John Canning did kind of lay out. In a memorandum, the scope of work that we'd like to undergo with the, the traffic report.
That, I mean, John, do you want to, is this, is this a good time to hear that? I don't think that'd be a bad thing for us to talk about for a few minutes, if you've got it handy.
I have most of it up here, if you can believe that.
Well, Jan, just, I don't, you go by Jan or Jan? What, how do you? Jan? So I don't know if Jan, Jan said you had it written down. You, you say it's in the head. So you tell me.
No, no, it, no, it was, it was in a memorandum and I don't have the memorandum. So it, the memorandum was submitted. Oh, I'm going to say probably November, right? And we've done a lot of talking since then. I've been listening very carefully. So here's, here's what we're going to do. All right. And then you can give me some more to do. We're going to do your traditional traffic impact study where you look at key intersections and the key intersections that we were planning to look at. Were the Route Nine driveway, Coleman Road, Snake Hill Road, Traverse Corner Road, the Snake Hill Road driveway. And then Route 9D at Snake Hill Road, which were the same intersections that were studied in for the, the, whatever it is, development PDD. That was done back in 2005. So that's a traditional traffic impact study. We're going to look at the busiest times. It's going to be the busiest day, the busiest hour for the busiest events. So that you can rest assured that even at the busiest times, it's going to be okay. And on a sort of a little tangent. To respond to Mr. Toman, because I know you had a kind of an important question at the last meeting. Is you're trying to get your hands around what exactly this is going to be. And you said, is it going to be like Marist? Is it going to be like the Culinary Institute? Is it going to be like FDR's library? So we did a little investigation. And it's definitely not going to be like Marist. It's got probably an eighth of the parking spaces, an eighth of the population. And it's on about the same size site and it's not even going to be Culinary Institute. It's probably a third, a half to a third of. The number of parking spaces and the, the population of the Culinary Institute, but it is going to be bigger than, than FDR. The, the library. It's, it's got almost or just about three times the number of parking spaces. So I hope that gives you some context. And then just jumping back to the traffic study. So we're doing the traditional traffic study for the busiest times. We're looking at site distances. We're looking at accidents. We're looking at turning lanes on the driveways. We're looking at the intersection of Snake Hill Road with Traverse Corners Road to see if we can get a traffic signal installed there. We are hopeful, to be honest with you, but I don't want to count my chickens before they hatch. We're looking at providing an extra lane at that location. And we're looking at parking, obviously. I think those are the key elements. They, we, I've been keeping track and certainly. I can go into detail if you want, while, while you guys are continuing with the rest of part one, I'll pull out that memo. And we can add to it as needed. But rest assured, we, I have been listening. I know traffic is a big, big deal on this project. We're going to do an extensive study. We want to address all of the issues that you have concerns about. And we want to make sure this works for the town and for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival.
Good. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Heidi, anything else?
I guess the other issue that seemed to come up a lot on the site visits was, is the. The noise levels and I, I'm not talking about, you know, calling Shakespeare noise, but just. I guess the ambient noise, you know, noise levels around the buildings and just, you know. How much, I guess, what the volume would be and when and that kind of thing, which I think, I think there is. I think it was mentioned that there's going to be a, like a full-length study of that or. Or I believe so. So that's it. Those are, those, those seem to be the bigger issues to me.
We're absolutely committed to doing a noise evaluation and study. We have already retained our, I know our expert who's, who's on with us this evening.
Good. I saw Peter's hand up.
I was just wondering if there was any vision. Under the land use part of, part one here, any vision of. What's going to take place with that land that is now being turned over? That was going to be the nine-hole golf course, whether or not it was. Thought to be kept open land, if it's going to be maintained as open land, or if it's going to be allowed to go through succession and become forest. Is there any, any thoughts on that? Or is that too, too far down the road to be thinking about at this point?
I think Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis said he, Chris could.
Yeah, I just say briefly, you know, we've already had preliminary meetings with conservation group and are, they're very impressed with sort of what's there. And I think our plan is we are already beginning to study rewilding examples of golf courses. It's a much trickier problem because it, it can be an invitation to invasives. And so, you know, our goal is to make sure that is to pursue the idea of rewilding with, you know, areas to walk and it's very, very gradual. Transformation, but not simply to. but not simply to abandon and have it go second growth forest or something like that.
Great. Thank you very much.
I think there, there will absolutely be an evaluation of that in the, in the secret documents. And we'll, we'll lay out a plan, uh, as to how we envision that happening. So you're aware of the goals and plan going forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other board members who have comments on part one, Laura, please.
Um, I have just a few questions. Um, so the, the first one is, I mentioned at the last meeting, with regard to the additional waste and sewage, I'm going to assume that you have included the public bathroom potentials for theater. Uh, I'm assuming you're going to put in public bathrooms for your indoor theater and, um, and even for the tent. I don't know if they're going to be porta potties and you're going to just roll them in and roll them out when you use them? Or are you putting in permanent bathroom fixtures? And if that's the case, has that been taken into the account of the total usage that you've identified?
Uh, yes, um, we have identified a usage of fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one gallons. And that includes, um, the permanent, um, bathroom facilities, um, for the facility, including the tent.
Okay. Um, and then the other question that I had is actually with regard to the culvert, um, that go, that leads out to Snake Hill. Um, you identify, now I've like lost my page. I think it says that that there are other areas that, um, that may be designated for SHPO review. Isn't that culvert also historical?
I haven't heard that the culvert's historical, however, we have started our consultation with SHPO. And, you know, we are absolutely getting them involved in the process and they're going to be looking at the entire project. I haven't heard that before, but, um, if it is, we'll know about it soon.
Okay. Um, and then the last question is actually for Mr. Canning. Um, so I know that you're doing all of the traffic studies, but I would also like to recommend that you also do a traffic management plan that's within your site. Because you're talking about a lot of traffic flow. And so, um, you know, and you may have like one ways this way and one ways that way, but there could be congestion depending on the flow of the traffic at peak. So just a recommendation, um, and then how that traffic management plan then oozes out into Route nine and to that. So meaning, are you going to have flagmen? Are you going to direct traffic if you don't have a traffic light? Just wanted to put it out there that that would be, um, highly beneficial if you did that.
We've, we've already planned for that. We expected that you would ask it, so we will certainly do it.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little late for home. I just need to talk to my wife for one second. One, sorry, we're only going three hours straight home. Sorry, someone had to walk the dog. I usually do the ten o'clock walk. This is, welcome to real world. So, okay, other, other board members' questions on or points of clarification on the part one. Thank you for those questions, Laura.
So I'm just going to say that I think that, um, my questions were all asked at the prior meetings. You know, that I went through part one before and I asked questions at the prior meetings as far as I recall.
Yes.
So I don't have anything specific to add, but it's already in your record.
Well, you are, you are a gold star student and we appreciate that.
You know, I just want to, you know.
All right. Other, others, others? Okay, Steve, stop yawning. Um, I know, I know, just kidding. All right, so I have a few, uh, if you would permit me. So page three under zoning. And, and Jan, just to be clear, this is not about gotcha. Uh, this is just about trying to get clarity on what you guys meant. Okay? So we're all, we're all trying to do this.
Yep.
All right. So page, uh, three of thirteen, C three zoning, letter B. Is this, is the use permitted or allowed by a special or conditional use permit? Now, I realize we're not, the town zoning is fluid in the case of what's going to happen here, depending on your application. But my reading of yours, where you're located, a theater is, has a dash, as I recall, in the use table. And in the use table, it has a dash in the R C, that means it's not allowed. Now, again, the town may change the zoning, it's outside my purview, but it says yes here for this use. I know you're not talking about every use, but that use in particular, which is a pretty significant part of the use in terms, both permanent, indoor and outdoor, I don't see theater, uh, theatrical as being in a, a permitted use.
Dan, you want to handle that one?
Well, I think that if you look at the, uh, the P D D zoning, that's where I think we relied on that. I don't have that right in front of me.
Yeah, but the P D D, I don't think authorized a theater.
Well, I think it permits the cultural events, uh, and coupled with that, the special event, because that's what I think Basque Bell has run on all these years, a special event, which is permitted under a parade permit of all things. So I think that there's a, a, a link there that, uh, you, we obviously need to make, get an amendment, uh, to the P D D zoning. That's what we're asking for, to allow the expansive use that we're seeking here. That's different than an eighteen-hole golf course. So, uh, we're, whether it's particularly, uh, theater use permitted, uh, I'm not clear on that at the moment. But, uh, we're seeking an amendment that would permit the theater use permanent and seasonally as well in the ten.
Yeah, all, all I'm saying is that the use table I looked at, and I'm just pulling it up as, as we speak, yeah, that has, uh, under the R C, it has, and again, I, I think it depends what we're talking about, it has lodging facility as a line through it. And again, I know the P D D is, is, I, I guess it supersedes an part. Um, but I don't, that, that struck me as being, as well as recreational business indoor, has a line through it, which is, I think, the closest thing you can describe the theater to being. Those have a line through it for the R C, so.
Yeah, I think we were thinking more of along the lines as, you know, the existing P D D local law allows a variety of different uses. And that's what we, you know, that we're consistent with.
Right. There's a, there's a, there's a link between the P D D permits special events and the special events is what permits the Basque Bell enterprise that we're on. So it was, it's, it's.
Yeah, I, I, you, you, maybe you and Steve can debate it, but to me, a permanent theater is not the same as a special event. The special event sounds temporary in nature and a permanent theater is not the same thing in this, this person's opinion.
Okay. Just, uh, that, Mr. Zuckman, regardless if it's checked yes or no, we're going to have an entire chapter in the part three A F that completely evaluates zoning.
Well, and, and I would agree with you because there's, this is where it gets a little inconsistent. If you go down halfway through the page, D one C, is the proposed action and expansion, existing project or use, you check no. So kind of, it, it's a little, I realize there's, this is such a heterogeneous mix of uses you've got. That it, it, it's hard to capture it all in one simple yes or no. It's sort of like a maybe would be a nice box.
But we, uh, we, we actually talked about that, this particular question, D one C as a team yesterday. And, uh, now knowing a little bit more about the project, you know, this, the C A F dates back to October.
Understood.
We could, um, we know a little bit more about the structures. We could actually put a number to that, uh, percentage of increase in square footage. Um, so I think in the next D A F, uh, iteration, you'll, you'll probably see a number there now that the project's been fine tuned a bit.
Great, thank you. Um, next one on page four, D two A is project operations. Page four, D two, it's question is, does the proposed action include any excavation, dot, 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 dot? And it says not including, we're all blah, 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 where all excavated materials will remain on site. You've got a pretty significant amount of buildings you want to put in. Are you not planning on removing that material off the site? Because by checking no, uh, reading the parenthetical, it would lead you to believe you're leaving everything there.
That's the expectation at this point in time. Um, the preliminary cut and fills, uh, appear to be close to balance. And given the, the size of the property, um, we do feel that we'll be able to contain all excavated materials on site. That'll be further evaluated in the part three when we actually, um, you know, we, we demonstrate that to you through our cut and fill analysis, but that's the expectation right now, yes.
All right. Thank you. Page ten of thirteen. This is section E one D. Page ten, section E one D, are there facilities serving children, et cetera, et cetera? Uh, you identify the Walter Hoving home correctly. There's also, as I understand, a group home on Coleman Road across the way from you, but within fifteen hundred feet. It is, um, it's either Fraser or Coleman, but I believe it's on one of, I think it's on Coleman. It's about two houses further north as you go on Coleman on the eastern side of the road. It is got a, I don't know the, how many people they have in the facility, but it is a commercial operation. That's a group home. It's a minor note, obviously, and would not change your plan. But you mentioned one, and that's the other one I know within your, your, your location.
I'll make sure we add that.
I, by the way, I can't give you the name of it, um, but that's, that's there. Page, page twelve of thirteen, which is in the section titled E two, natural resource. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm raising what Heidi, I believe Heidi brought up, and it'll come up again when we talk about areas for investigation in the E F part two, but letters N and P. You state that no, does the site, project site contain designated significant natural community? No. And then in letter P, you state, does the project site contain any species of plant or animal that's listed as rare? And you write no. And my question for both is how do you know they are no?
Um, significant natural community is a defined term by the New York State D C and they have maps to that effect. And we've coordinated with them, with the Natural Heritage Program, and we're confident that we don't, we're not in a significant natural community as defined by the state. So that's how that one was answered. And again, we, we've coordinated with the state, uh, with regards to, uh, threatened endangered species. They've identified it, identified to the northern long-eared bat and bald eagle, but they've identified that they're offsite in proximity to the site. Um, so that's why that was answered, no.
Okay. And do we have that information? Because that seems like a, as Heidi mentioned, an area I think this group would like some study on. In part, I'll just, again, as I've referenced a few times, this board went to extreme lengths, as did the applicant for Hudson Highlands Reserve to provide, and, and Glenn is your advisor. So he knows intimately the, the volume of work done by that group to study those issues. And so that, we have reams and reams of analysis that I'm sure was not cheap, nor was short in duration. And I'm not suggesting you need that work, but I am suggesting we need something more than no.
Oh, you, you absolutely will, and that will come, um, as appendices in the part three E A F. Uh, we'll provide all our communication to you that we've had with the D C and the guidance documents that they're asking us to, um, abide by. So that, yeah, it'll definitely, you'll have it for sure.
Good. So it's ten thirty-five. Uh, there are two tasks I think we can get done, even though we're a little past when my colleagues, uh, except one, were, were fatigued out. And her stamina is impressive to me at all times. Uh, so I think first we can do is toggle through the E F components and just give you a viewpoint quickly about whether we think we need to see additional study. Dan, you asked for this, and I think you've gotten some sense already. But if we go through all eighteen very rapid fire, very almost yes or no, whether people are expecting to see more, I think you've gotten that sentiment, but I think that can give you a better sense if you feel like that's not clear at this point. And then I'd like to conclude with scheduling and debating for a moment and scheduling potentially a special meeting where we can go into the E F part two in real detail without being time, time constrained.
And as ancillary to that, if we could speak about in the interim between now and the special meeting and now and scheduled meetings, if we would be able to interface our team with A K R F and Mr. Gainer to help expedite all of the, uh, process.
Yeah, and thank you. I, I was a complete miss on my part that I did not mention that upfront for the benefit of the public. So I apologize. And so I'll just, let's just talk about that briefly. So as, as the board voted on at the last board meeting, we have retained, thanks to our town board, and thank you both to Supervisor Shay, as well as our rep, Bob, um, Bob Flaherty here for helping get that approved. We are going to use A K R F, who was assisting, has assisted us in the past to include on Hudson Highlands Reserve to provide an additional planning and environmental viewpoint, uh, on the, the work we see. It's always helpful to have a pair of professional eyes on top of our, our legal eagle and the best damn engineer who's ever, and ever engineered a thing, Ron Gainer. So we're going to have A K R help and of course you can work with them. I don't think you need anything other than, I mean, I don't know if you need to vote on that, but you certainly should be working with them uh, as they come on board. And I believe they're on this call somewhere out here. So that, go for that.
Thank you.
Unless, I can't imagine any of my colleagues have a problem with you working with A K R. Okay. So why don't we just do a quick tour through the E A F part two about areas where Powell Board, do you not agree, Steve?
It's the board's prerogative. If that's what it wants to do, it should do.
Uh, this is just, uh, uh, we can just go through all eighteen parts and just say, if anyone thinks they need additional study. So impact on land, people feel like that's.
Just to interject real quick, um, just keep in mind, uh, back in February, we also included a, a scope, an outline of what we've already committed to studying in the part three and the additional studies. So, um, just wanted.
Well, well, then, then I, then I may ask that we then hold on this, because it.
Yeah, I think.
Dan asked for us to give this view. We've given some opinions already. If you'd like us to then interpret that document and come back from there, I'm happy to do that. I'm sure my colleagues would prefer to delay anyway on that.
Well, I think that's a good idea, given the, the time change that we've had tonight. So I, I think the outline we provided, the scope for part three is a real good document to see what we would, will, what we anticipate providing, and you can add to that as you see fit.
Yeah, good. I mean, I think it's clear from this conversation, what I've heard, and I'll just highlight this for you, Dan, from listening to my colleagues. I've certainly heard of things about plants, we've heard, which is number seven, we've heard traffic, number thirteen, we've heard noise, number fifteen. I would add to you that I think there's something to be done about in further understanding on the surface water, which is number three, tied to the pond, and just understanding that clearly, I think it was Heidi mentioned, maybe it was Laura, number four, groundwater. And I think some conversation to be had around numbers seventeen and eighteen, around community character. I think this is a conversation about what this means. I'm not suggesting I have an opinion. I'm suggesting that it, it means, I think that's an area where we'll need it. What that means in additional study, I think is worthy conversation, but I think we'll take Jan's document. If you would recirculate that, Jan, that will be helpful. Any other board members want to comment on additional areas of study? Heidi, please.
I, I just wanted to mention one last thing that's been raised a lot by, from the public, which is the, the sightlines, where the, uh, tent's going to be located on the, in the sightline. Um, and that, and I'm just, I'm just saying that I think that that's something people are going to want to hear about, what it's going to look like, maybe some renderings of what the, what it's going to look like from various, uh, points where, uh, people are used to not seeing anything there and then, and you know, how it's going to affect, you know, what they are going to see if the site's built.
We're already working on that.
Yeah.
Well, Heidi, that's a great point. I mean, that's, that's section nine, impact on aesthetic resources. And that, that really does come into letter B, which is, you know, does it screen officially designated scenic views? I'm guessing Storm King is an officially designated scenic view. And getting an answer to that question would be useful. I think that's a very good point, Heidi. Others? Okay. So let's do this then. Let's schedule with everyone is, I wanted to give the sentiment, my colleagues, are people comfortable having a dedicated special meeting? We can tell them about when it is. Can I just get a show of hands, please, around the support of that idea? Kim's okay, Dennis, Laura, Heidi, Peter, and Neil is, oddly, Neil, you're way down below on my screen. I, I wish you were higher up, then we could all be together. Um, virtually that is. Everyone else is together in this one area. I don't know. Um, okay. So then let's talk timing. Uh, Cheryl, how long do we need for noticing? Two weeks?
Yes, ten, ten to twenty days, so.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, uh, this, I think there's two dates that could work. We could, we could go, we could go for, um, three, I guess, the twenty-ninth of April, that seems tight. Um, or we can go the sixth of May or the thirteenth of May. I like staying on the same day and the same time, at least that provides some regularity for the public.
But I think we, we, we could do the twenty-ninth of April, um, pretty, even though it's, uh, because that way we can get a lot done between that, that date and May fifteenth, too.
Right, right. Well, I.
Sorry, Neil, that might be a little short, just with the newspaper dates and things.
Oh, yeah.
AKRF is going to be ready by then either, to be honest.
Okay, so what was the other one, May fifth?
Well, I was just doing the next Thursdays, because we we meet on, we meet the third Thursday of every month. So I was just picking other Thursdays. So the sixth or the thirteenth, any opinions? Go ahead, Kim.
I'd prefer the sixth.
Okay, others?
This is Cecilia, the sixth is the town board meeting. We'll be on that.
So here's a here's a question for Bob Flaherty, if he's still here. Are we going to be back in town hall next month? Because I.
We we. There's a good pause. Richard indicated that he'd like to have the next town board meeting in the town hall itself. Didn't confirm that yet, but we did discuss it briefly, and he'd like to have it there if we can.
Okay, because the ZBA in their meeting this month said they were going to meet next month in town hall.
The one Steve Gaba mentioned that there are, even if the meetings can be held in the public facilities, there are restrictions on capacity. And there's sixty three people on this call right now.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't, I let's not, can we not mix the person virtual with the question about what date we're meeting?
So then I guess the question is, if we're not meeting in town hall, is there a reason that we can't meet the same night as the town board?
I think Cecilia is making, I think Cecilia is making a technical point about her capacity to manage the Zoom. Is that correct, Cecilia?
Yeah, because there at the town hall, I'll be doing that in person. And then I wouldn't be able to host this. I could get it started, but I had to record. I'll be in two different places, so.
Okay.
And so then.
That answers my question.
Then the thirteenth, Cecilia, you're free? Cecilia?
Yes, sorry, I was looking, yes, thirteenth is good.
Okay, folks, I I know Dan, I maybe gives AKF a little more time again. By the way, this is for us to walk it through. It's not going to be that we're not done in one night. So I'm not worried AKR doesn't get a full shot at it. But I think that may give enough time and gives us, again, we're going to do a whole three hour session just on the EF part two. During a lot, lots of juicy time, the soaker teeth, so the sinker teeth in there. So the thirteenth, it seems like we're at then.
Fine, seven thirty?
Seven thirty, everyone at board members, May thirteenth. Dan, go ahead. Good? Yes, we're good.
No, that's good for me.
Yeah, Dennis, thank you. Other board members?
It's good.
Do we want to think about moving it to seven, Neil?
I mean, I I'm okay to start at seven. I just I we've never, we always meet at seven thirty. So I just want to, if if everyone feels, no one thinks there's going to be a drop off to starting a half hourly, I'm fine with that.
What would be our deadline for submitting any additional info for May thirteenth? Two weeks before that? Do we have a little more leeway on that if we're? For example, we we've already begun the reverse view shed analysis, you know. So a lot of these things we've already anticipated and we can get them in, but I don't want to do it piecemeal.
Speaking as for for the board members, as opposed to the public who would consume anything from the board members, we kind of need the weekend before the weekend before, so we can read this stuff.
Okay. The new site plane will be ready, so.
Okay. All right, so you've got a dedicated night gang on May thirteenth, seven o'clock, by the way. Is everyone okay, start at seven?
That's fine.
And Kim, okay with that? Oh, Dan, I'm asking my colleagues first.
Oh, sorry.
Seven o'clock, yeah.
Seven. It's good.
Okay. Bob, you're okay with us doing it in a half hour? That's, yeah, fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right.
Are you going to be on the agenda the following week as well?
Yeah, that's a good question. Well, I I think let's debate that. We'll see what we need to do the next. Let's see if we can, we let's just see. I think we could put them on the agenda. We probably will, but I think we'll have a more narrow scope that night.
And the submission date for May thirteenth would be April twenty ninth?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll we'll have something in further.
Good. So there will be a revised EA F at that point, Dan?
Jan?
Yes.
All right, good. Good. All right, well, we made some progress.
Say so.
Thank you for your patience. Chris, thanks for your passion. And everyone, thanks for your time.
Thank you. We'll see you on the.
All right. Okay.
Everybody.
Thanks for hanging in here. Thank you, guys. Good night.
Good night.